...of the Santa Barbara School Board on April 10th, and will everyone please stand for the pledge? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We have a translator here this evening, I believe. Ah, our translator, no, it's Alma Flores.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Alma Flores, y si necesitan servicios de intérprete, estoy sentada ahí atrás.
Okay? Muchas gracias. And we have headsets for hearing impaired as indicated on the slide in front of us. Announcement of closed session action. We have one piece of action to report, and it was approval of a Casey waiver for graduation for students with disabilities. It was a single waiver, and Ms. Malakoff moved, Ms. Parker seconded, and it was approved Acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with gratitude.
Long list.
Second.
Thank you. So Ms. Parker and then Ms. Cordero, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thank you to community members. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Is this on, Chris? I do have two introductions tonight. The first is a, let's see, Marge, where are you?
She's in the back.
Oh, there she is. I am very pleased to introduce to the board and the community Marjorie Variano, our new principal at Adams Elementary School. Marjorie has been an elementary school principal for five years and a vice principal at a secondary school, a junior high school, for two years in New York. She comes to us with a rich background in curriculum and a good deal of practical experience. We're pleased she'll begin work on April 16. Clock's ticking on that, that is quick, and anticipate a seamless transition in school leadership. We wish current principal Matt Zukowicz well in his new position with the county education office. Marge, would you like to say anything?
I'm just thrilled to be here, anxious to become part of the community, working with the teachers, working with the students, and looking forward to meeting everybody. I have open door policy, so please come on in anytime and come visit the school, and I'm anxious to get started. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you. Pleasure to have you here. We got out there early with these interviews, and we think we got the best. And the next presentation, I would like to start with a video. Are we all set with the video? Okay. This presentation has to do with teen court. There are a couple of people I would like to introduce just after the video, but I think for you to have some sense of what teen court is about, I think this video does a better I'll tell you what, so that we don't lose any time, let me introduce those people to you now, and when we're set with the video, we'll cut to the video. I think we've, are we still frozen?
Trying to figure that out.
Ah, technology. Well, I would like a couple of people to come forward. Judge Tom Adams, would you please come forward? I'd also like to ask our own Ann Peake from personnel to come up to the podium. And I would like to have, and I'd like to have Ed Quay, the Delinquency Prevention Director for the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse step forward. Let's see, I guess you're right in the middle of the picture. Teen Court began in 1992 when Judge Thomas Adams, who oversaw the juvenile courts, saw a need that was not being addressed. He approached Klein Bottled Social Advocates for Youth with the idea of providing an alternative to the traditional juvenile justice system. The program is available to youth ages 10 to 17 in Santa Barbara County who commit education code violations. As we have, as we will just see, Teen Court is a diversion program for first-time juvenile offenders and provides real consequences. Over 250 cases were heard in Santa Barbara Teen Court last year, with an additional 282 cases heard in teen courts operating in Santa Maria, San Inez, and Lompoc. In the past 15 years, over 5,700 youth have been diverted from the courts and/or school disciplinary system through Teen Court. And I would like to publicly thank Judge Tom Adams, in fact, I have a plaque for you here, Judge Adams, for your instrumental role in setting up this program. I would also like to thank Ann Peake. Ann Peake, from our district office, has been involved in Teen Court for 15 years. How about that? And you still put plenty of time into your day job. And we have a tack, a plaque, excuse me, for Teen Court, and would like Ed Quay, the Delinquency Prevention Director, to convey our appreciation to the board and staff of the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. Thank you, Ed. Judge Adams envisioned a system that encourages teens to take responsibility for poor choices and redirect their actions toward positive behaviors. How are we with the film? Well, let's take a look, then. Here, would you like to have a seat here with me?
You always want to protect them, and you always want to nurture them and do the best you can for them and protect them, and I can't protect him anymore. He did this on his own, and he has to have the consequences, unfortunately, you know, because I can't bail him out of this one.
I'm Eloise Hardy, Auntie Otis' mom. I'm a single mom, have been since he was five, so it's been hard, and his dad has been in and out of his life. He hasn't wanted to see him very much.
Everyone please rise. This court is now in session. The Honorable Judge Walton presiding. All of the jury, please be seated and come forth.
He was playing sports and doing all that, but he was using drugs, too.
Case we're about to hear is referred to Andrew Otis for possession of less than one ounce of marijuana on school grounds. Teen Court is here to turn this on its consequences. Andrew is 14 years old and lives with his mother.
Got a call from the vice principal, and I had to go pick him up, and he might be expelled from school, but yes, he'll have to go to Teen Court. I never had this happen, so trying to do the best we can, and I brought him home and just said, "What were you thinking?" and, you know.
He's not personally harvested marijuana, nor has he ever sold marijuana to anyone. This incident is strictly him purchasing marijuana for the kid.
I need him to take the responsibility of it, you know, he's the one that did it. I didn't do it. Even though I feel responsible for it, he's the one that has to take the responsibility
Your firm has a testimony you're about to give, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and it's not a torture. Let's see.
So that you don't sell or act as an illegal dealer, or take those practices?
Yeah, that's what we, this was long time.
And, but, like, frequently use marijuana?
Yes.
How long have you had marijuana with your mom?
Uh, like, two years.
You guys smoke together?
Yes.
Does he sell other people by you?
Yes. They're over the same. No, it was like once every five months, and then it started being like once a week and once every 15. Yeah. And then...
What did you have it as a drug?
Uh, not smoking, just like, I'm just trying to stay clean.
He's been going to Daniel Bryant for a month now, and he decided on his own, took the initiative to make the phone call, to make the appointment.
What feels that, you know, when you might have that urge to, you know, how you have to make sure not to do it?
He disappointed in me, because like, I, in KADA, we talk every day, and like, so I just be like disappointed that myself when everybody's like, "Stay clean, they're trying to do..."
And he loves Daniel Bryant. They've been great. I mean, it's been, it's been really a good experience. They've been very helpful and nurturing, they just have helped with it, because I've never been through it before. But I'm glad we caught it early enough.
You chose four, which is the maximum, because, because you're kind of young to be dealing coke and stuff like that, so you can make friends here, too, so better apology to your mom for several reasons. One would be the amount of money that she uses you to spend on your habit, counseling your workshop, you're in the moderate treatment at the Daniel Bryant Center. Education classes, alcohol and drug education class, and life choices education class, you have a parent program, you have a three-year.
So this is your second chance. Are you aware of, if you don't follow through through these obligations, all of them, what happens? Which means you'll be a probation referral, juvenile probation, and you don't want to do that. Okay, so this is your opportunity to, if you just can learn a lot.
I feel that Andy's going to grow as a person and have a stronger personality and a better life because of this. I don't think he will go back on it. I think he's learned that he took a huge, a huge loss in his life, and he had to grow up very quickly, and all, but good's going to come from it.
I think kids today, a lot of teenagers, they believe they can control the uncontrollable. They believe that if they're going to drink, they can do it in a safe environment and control what happens to them. And we all know it's a foul seed, you cannot control chaos.
I named the Otis, and I was referred to Teen Court for...
Drug abuse?
Minor possession of marijuana.
Or a minor possession of alcohol?
Minor possession of alcohol.
I was referred to Teen Court through...
Possession and selling of marijuana.
The police officer actually told my friend and I...
I had two choices, whether I would take six months of probation, or there was a Teen Court program that I could go through.
That was the first thing that came into my head, was, oh, what are my parents going to do?
You're sitting there, and you know you got busted for something, your parents have talked to you like most of your life about not to do, not to do.
My mom was there. She was, yeah, she was sitting like right across from me.
Looked at her face, and she was kind of like sad to hear me say I do cocaine.
Was eye-opening that he was smoking as much as he was.
My dad looked like he was almost eating me alive.
We have visions of Mark sitting on a curb with in handcuffs. We really felt betrayed as parents.
I've never been in a court before, and I was really nervous.
I didn't realize how hard it was going to be.
Kind of it's a slap in the face, like, you're on court, and you're going to ask questions about illegal things, because you don't... Yeah, have to be honest and announce, but this stuff to, whoever wants to be the... And this is, it's, it's hard. That's, it would hurt me a little.
Well, fortunately, fortunately, we were at the end of that video anyway.
It played fine earlier, I'm not sure what...
Yes, but I think those examples typify Teen Court very well. We have one other honored guest, Penny Jenkins, who's the executive director. Penny, would you please stand up, Executive Director of the Council Hall, Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, and you'll be hearing from Penny during public comments on another issue, but we're most pleased to have you with us here tonight as well.
Thank you.
And I think we can cut the film.
Yeah, it looks like it's going to keep sticking.
Ms. Harder?
Yeah, no, I, on behalf of the board, I, I just want to say that we are so grateful for the services of Teen Court and also for, for KADA. They are critical partners to the schools in providing support for young people in our community who make bad choices, and to help them to get back on track. And, you know, it's cliched, but it takes a village, and certainly Teen Court and KADA are a big part of that village. So we thank you for coming tonight, and we appreciate everything that you do for our Superintendent's report.
Good. I have a few items, I will be brief. The UNIDev Consolidated Final Report has been received by the district and has been posted on the district website. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is on display in the reception area, it can be provided through my office. I'd like to call your attention to three items in our last board brief. One was a summary of the March 8 Town Hall meeting on gangs in Santa Barbara. Another was the interim financial report analysis and recommendations from the county education office, and that has bearing on tonight's report with our second interim budget review. And the third was a memorandum of understanding between Harding Elementary School and the Child Nutrition Services Department, so that Harding can take more direct responsibility for their own lunch program, and we're excited about that prospect. Upcoming events, looking ahead, there are several events we can look forward to in the next three weeks. Caesar Chavez and Santa Barbara Public Health Department will hold a nutrition decathlon on April 20. Employee Appreciation Day in the Santa Barbara school districts will take place on May 3. This is our seventh annual event at Borders Bookstore downtown. It's a wonderful opportunity for our certificated and classified staff and their families, as well as management, confidential employees, and board members throughout the districts to get together. Nutrition Services will conduct a food fair on May 4. We'll be giving you more information on that. San Marcos High School will perform the musical The Wiz on May 3 through 5, and May 9 through 11. Sadly, Ruben Salazar, the senior gardener at Galita Valley Junior High School, died of a heart attack at the start of spring break. Ruben was a highly respected employee who is known for his dedication to the students and the school that he served. Our condolences go out to the Salazar family. Mrs. Salazar is a food service assistant at Santa Barbara Junior High School, so we were saddened by that loss. And that's it for tonight's report.
Thank you, Dr. Sarves. Student report, I see a likely...
I believe we have Brendan Faraday with us.
Yeah.
Good evening, board members. I trust you all enjoyed the break, but I don't know how much of a break you got. This, April is predominantly for the school elections. Dos Publos is having their campaigning take place for the ASB elections next week, and, I'm sorry, the campaign is taking place this week, and next week are the elections on Friday. And also on that Friday, we are having our annual international day, where clubs provide a food that they closely associate with. We're also going to have live entertainment and dance for the students. This Thursday, we are honoring a day of silence in support of gay rights, and students choose to stay silent for the entire day, and they get a flyer that they can present to their teachers explaining what they're doing. And it is, it is protesting how, how people who, who are of that, who are, who associate closely with homosexuals, lesbians, transgender, transgender, bisexual, or questioning are not allowed to speak, and that's what they're protesting. We will also be honoring Denim Day and Social Awareness Week in May. We don't have set dates for those yet, and the Dos Publos prom will be May 19. For Santa Barbara, the ASB elections went very well. They had a state-of-the-art computer counting system where the students were able to place their votes on computers. It is the first year that they used it. It did quit midway through, but it, they, they have seen the potential that it can, the potential of using, using this that it can provide. The class officers are campaigning this week, and their elections will be this Friday. The state standardized testing is taking place for both schools, and both schools have scored very high in the past, and we expect them to do so again. I know Dos Publos is offering added incentives to the students who perform well. Their, the principal is offering to shave his head in the Greek if we, if we beat our score last year. We're also raffling off an iPod to a student who displays, displays good testing behavior. Santa Barbara also, excuse me? Oh. Santa Barbara, their prom will be taking place May 26, and they also raised $400 for pennies for patients within Santa Barbara. And I'm very happy to report that Brad Ebner is doing significantly better. He had his first day of school, I believe, today. He was able to come for an hour, yeah. He, he's very huggy, if you, if you see him, he loves hugs right now, and he's, he's getting his language back, and he's expected to make a full recovery. So that's all the important prayers of the community to be thanked. And that's it. Are there any questions from the board?
No, thanks, Brendan. Lots of good news. That's the kind of stuff that we like to hear. So thank you for coming and taking the time.
You're very welcome.
And I'm sure you have homework to do. Did you get loaded down today?
I did, right back from spring break, never fails.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's always, always a high, high spot for board members, I think. Public comments, we have a number of them. Ms. Malakoff? Custom is three minutes a person. As I look through the slips, many of you are experienced board member speakers, three minutes with a 30-second warning.
Laura Baker, followed by Luther Lewis.
Thank you. My name's Laura Baker, I'm a teacher at Lacumbra Junior High School. The Lacumbra community has never understood why there was never any other option for the academy move to Lacumbra but Lacumbra and the master plan. There's no place online where we can find this information. Please help us understand what the blinders, why the blinders were putting in place for these options. We don't understand. Cleveland Elementary School is very underutilized, even when one makes allowances for the unrealistic loading numbers in the facility's master plan. With its history of severe declining enrollment and expected continuance of that decline, couldn't Cleveland absorb the academy with only a few portables added to the site? This would be the same portables that the current options plan to add to the junior high site. A phase-in of grade levels at Cleveland would cost nothing, since they have space for at least one, if not two, grade levels right now, with no retrofitting of property equaling no cash outlay. To move the academy to Lacumbra would take portables for restrooms and classroom space as needed. Why not do it at the elementary site? There would be no need for a traffic study or driveway parking area upgrades, there would be no need to move equipment to retrofit whiteboards, et cetera, to fit the little kids. Cleveland has a lot of acreage. Cleveland is the other year-round school, has low numbers, and quite frankly, makes the most sense for the academy. Bussing may not be an issue for the academy since, at all, since the kids from the east side already, kids are from the east side already. I bet there's existing bus routes to Cleveland that the majority of the downtown academy kids could access right now. The kids from Cleveland feed to Santa Barbara Junior High, where the majority of the siblings of the academy's kids are now in attendance. This would completely wipe out the issue of taking the east side kids and placing them on the west side campus. In this current climate, that is an issue that must be considered. I'm not playing Chicken Little, I'm just trying to look at things realistically. The youth of our communities are highly aware of the tensions between the east side and the west side, especially right now. We need to be just as aware and proactive in our attempts to mitigate these issues, not compound them. Yes, we do a fantastic job with discipline at Lacumbra, but kids are kids. We do have kids who have been jumped into gang life, as basically any secondary school does. We have a large number of kids who identify with the west side groups. This is their reality. It is the kind of thing that I've been concerned about for the little ones since I heard about bringing them to Lacumbra. I just never said it out loud before, I didn't feel comfortable doing so. I'm saying it now. I spoke with a gang prevention officer after the Harding Town Hall meeting. He said he does not agree with the idea of putting the little kids on the junior high campus and exposing them to junior high issues. That was rather telling. Most of you here made mention at the February 6 meeting that this was not the most ideal situation, and it was going to be difficult to keep these kids' two programs separate on this campus. I think that Lacumbra could be freed up for a lot of other, other things if we don't do this. Safety and education, two critical issues that could be jeopardized for both groups if you move the academy to Lacumbra.
Thank you. Luther Lewis, followed by Ann Benet Trent.
Thank you. I have several things here. Does anybody know what the status is on the traffic study at Lacumbra Junior High School at this moment? Can I ask a question?
No, actually, you can, Mr. Lewis. We don't do a back and forth, it's your time to speak to us.
We can contact you later and talk to you about that.
We also, many times we've been up here and opposing the Lacumbra move, the academy move to Lacumbra, it has been running 85% against about 15 to 20% for moving the academy over there. And as I stated last time, this is not a very good idea to co-mingle these little kids with the big kids. For the last 15 years, we've had a problem in Santa Barbara with the gangs. And where do you think they get their members? They recruit them. And this would be an ideal place to start, and they start young. The little kids should be with little kids, the big kids with big kids. You have a meeting scheduled for the 17th, which is next Tuesday, a special meeting, but you don't say what it's for. And I would like to know that question, too. And the many times that I've, we have been up here with the West Side Neighborhood Group, we've asked you to keep us informed of what is going on. You know what? We haven't got one single phone call, not one call. You have ignored us. We are not even in your, in your plan at all. We're outsiders. No one has called me, and the only way you got to my house is I invited Nancy Harder over to my house, and, and you were supposed, and you were supposed to call me with a date. I haven't got it yet. I'm sorry, I'm upset about this. Are we being really ignored? Is all these things going secretly behind our back? What's going on? You have my address, you have my phone number. Would you call me for those, with those answers, please?
30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The April 17 meeting is a special board meeting, and it will be discussing budget issues, and I think that we've stated that a number of times before, it will be strictly budget issues on the agenda, there won't be...
We will contact Mr. Lewis when we do have a date.
Great.
Kenneth, I'm sorry, Ann Benet Trent, followed by Kenneth Locke.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Ann Benet Trent, and I'm a tutor, after-school tutor, for students mostly who come from McKinley School. We have a small tutoring center down on the lower west side that's funded by the Housing Authority. I've been watching for the last eight years, as I've been working there, with some growing concern, the deterioration... the deterioration of the enrichment programs at some of our more, less affluent schools, I should say, such as McKinley. This year, myself and one of the teachers at McKinley and some other concerned citizens contributed about $10,000 to reinstate Matt Johnson, the PE teacher there. And we got him all the way through March. And then, a wonderful woman named Patty McComber, who is in her 70s, whose three daughters went to McKinley, heard about the problem. And she worked very hard for a couple of months to put on an all-day sports spectacular at McKinley. We had a lot of families attend, and she raised about $6,000, which was enough to put Matt through the end of the year, working there at the school, which really has lost their librarian and their art program and their PE teachers. So I'd like to commend the school board and the school district for helping us put that fundraiser on. But we did end up having to pay rent for the building, and we did end up having to buy the insurance. And I would hope there might be a way for you to maybe get a facilitator that could help some of the private citizens in our community who want to assist our less affluent schools as they struggle with the budget problems. And perhaps there would be a way we could all work together to let citizens come forth and support these schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Locke, followed by Deborah Bentland?
My name is Kenneth Locke. I spoke before the city council, probably after the gang situation. And I mentioned to them, is it time for the students to start to receive an interdisciplinary education? I'm claiming to be able to bridge the gap. Right now, presently, this education they're receiving is based on a non-interdiscipline. It's actually, it's kind of pigeonhole these kids into, you know, maybe what they're inclined to, what they have aptitude. And it's kind of like, I see it as premature. I bridge the gap because I understand the basis of the contributions that the likes of a Jackson Pollock has made to the avant-garde art movement in relation to the abstract of the 20th century. And with that understanding, we can understand the basis of a fusion or interdisciplinary in relation to painting. Jackson Pollock was the artist who kind of threw the paint on the canvas. He kind of got into the kind of the exercise. We can kind of understand the basis of painting in relation to yoga, in relation to mind-body-spirit-soul integration. So it's pinnacle. It's time, the whole basis of that movement is, now it's time for us to now shift into a higher level of integration in relation to multiple disciplines, which will actually bring us to a higher level of intelligence. Some of the concepts that actually will bring us through a paradigm shift. These kids can actually start to begin to increase in relation to an interdisciplinary intelligence versus a non-interdisciplinary intelligence. They can begin to take on a character, a self, in relation to multiple disciplines. The problem with this socioeconomic landscape that we have now is that the focus is on money. And the problem with that is that, within this, again, the socioeconomic landscape, there's a tremendous amount of waste. And I'm actually in the process of explaining, I think I dropped a page off to you, my perspective, short, perspective on the concept of recycling in relation to art. If we have the children actually get involved with actually, and paint, kind of mimic what Jackson Pollock, and actually have them enter into a relationship with painting where it's understood in relation to a physical, metaphysical, spiritual, then we can understand that the byproduct of that relationship is, it's kind of like a non-object, a non-objective object, a painting of nothing, that we should not give value to. Because actually, the value in relation to this relationship is that the children actually have a relationship where it begins and then it develops. And then we can actually incorporate a recycling of the end result type of situation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deborah Bentland?
Pentland.
Followed by Penny Jenkins.
I'm just going to take a moment to speak with you tonight. Thank you for letting me address the board. I know in the next month, we're going to have a lot of difficult decisions to make regarding the budget. So what I'm bringing before you tonight is I've just done a little bit of homework for you on healthcare services and got some studies. So if it comes up as one of the considerations for the budget, I want you to have the full information and staffing. It's very difficult to look at staffing in health services because there really is no Department of Education staffing guidelines. However, the, what does happen in the education code is we have numerous mandates and health services that need to be met by either a credentialed school nurse or a physician. So the board and the administration is often left with a difficult task of trying to weed, what do we really need to meet the services? So I've also gained a research data piece out of the University of Washington that I found exceptional. So I give this to you, you know, before you have to make many of your decisions. I just tried to be a little bit ahead of it. And thank you. I appreciate your work very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your work as well, and thank you for the information. Penny Jenkins.
Hello. It's nice to see all of you again. And I'm just here to make an announcement about a couple of things that are going on with our partnership with the Santa Barbara High School District and with our partnership from Fighting Back and the council. The first thing I want to talk about is tomorrow night, and it's called "The Mission for Mentors." And it's a mentor telethon, and you're going to be there. I know. Good for you, answering the phone. And so is Dr. Sarvas and lots of people. And we are going to be in Paseo Nuevo. We will be in Center Court by the fountain from 5:00 to 8:00. Come and sign up, and you'll get a T-shirt, and you'll get pizza and all sorts of things. Or else, call in. But we are trying to get more mentors because I don't know if many of you read Jim Wolfe's letter in the paper this morning, talking about he is a boy that he's been mentoring for a while, and he feels his friends are in gangs and that sort of thing. But he's not. And he feels it's because he's had a mentor. If everybody had a mentor, I think we could solve a lot of problems. Anyway, please call in and sign up, or tell your friends. Anyway, it's K-E-Y-T, and it's from 5:00 to 8:00. The second thing I want to announce is next Wednesday night, we're partnering. We will be at San Marcos High School. It will be a town hall meeting on underage drinking. And we will have a panel, including Judge Emergency Room, various physicians, and people talking about what to do about the problem of underage drinking and what parents can do. And there's a new social host ordinance where parents are going to be receiving a fine for serving alcohol that we're going, we're working with, with the city council. So it's to educate people about why not to serve kids alcohol. Their brain develops differently. That 21 wasn't just an arbitrary number. So please come, join in the conversation, and help us to understand what to do with the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Now we are on to our consent agenda. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Yes. That is present.
We'll get to it. We'll get to it. Hang on. That's next. It's okay. Consent agenda?
I just wanted to mention what's buried underneath here is my usual, I like to point out the retirements. We have four retirements. Michael Hart, a teacher at Does Publicis, who's been with us for 40 years. Mary Ann Borchers, preschool teacher at Harding, who's with us for 10 years. Marcia Layman, school health assistant at Washington, is with us for 24 years. And Marcy Petropoulos, an instructional aide, who's been with us for 18-plus years.
Thank you for noting that.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Cordero, seconded by Ms. Malikov. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is approved, 5-0. Okay. A note that is on the agenda. Does the board wish to consider hearing item F1, the report on career technical education planning prior to item E1? Or do we wish to move ahead with E1?
I move that we go ahead and listen to F1 first.
Okay.
Second.
Do we want to take a vote on it? That's fine.
I didn't quite hear the issue.
There was a note on the agenda, under E action agenda. It says, "The board should consider hearing item F1, 'Report on Career Technical Education Planning Prior to the Next Item E1.'" And it's an item that was, I think, punted twice off the agenda because of time constraints. And, okay, Mr. Zettel says, "three times." And it was, it had preceded the discussion on American Charter High School and is directly linked to the discussion of career technical education. So it, yes, we will move forward with F1. It's...
There's a motion.
There was a motion for Ms. Cordero, a second from Ms. Parker.
No, other way around.
Thank you. So it appears that we will take a vote.
And the motion is what?
To hear item F1 before item E1. Discussion? Your preference would be E1.
It's only a second, right?
Yeah, it is. Any discussion? Okay. All those who would prefer to hear item F1 first, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on with F1. It passes 5-0.
And making the presentation tonight will be Jan Zettel, the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education. This is a report on career technical education planning, which is based on what is happening at the state level and how it affects school districts, including ours.
And there should be backup materials in the room if anybody's interested.
I hope so. There has been. Thank you, Mrs. Harder and board members. I'm very pleased to be here to give you a beginning, I guess, to get you in on the ground floor of the planning and the work that's going into redoing our career technical education program here in the district. A lot of this is due to a revamping under AB 2448 of the ROCPs. And specifically, the ROCPs are being required now to create...
Mr. Zettel, I don't want to throw you off. Explain ROCP to those who aren't in on educational jargon.
I'm sorry. They're regional occupational, career pathways or career programs. And they are, in some areas, jointly entered into by county offices. Sometimes they're put together as their own districts. And so our ROP programs are run through our county office, through Mr. John Ingram. So some of the things that we're looking at currently as a precursor to getting federal funds, which are the Perkins or successor funds coming from that, school districts, ROPs, community colleges need to do all of the following. And number one is to develop course sequences, currently called pathways, within career technical ed programs in high schools. And adopt a plan, and approve a plan, the board needs to do that by July 1, 2008. By 2009, July 1, all three entities must establish course sequences that include at least one-third of the courses offered by ROP in occupational areas in which both the ROP and community college offer instruction. So the point is that we need to begin in high school by offering introductory career technical ed courses, perhaps a secondary course, and then moving on to a capstone course. And generally, the ROP is the capstone course. Moving then into a pathway at a community college or a four-year institution, which would lead to a certification at a two-year college level, further leading on to a Bachelor of Arts degree at a four-year institution in that career area, of which there are 15 industry sectors identified in California. And then moving forward further into graduate-level work and professional-level courses within that industry sector that would lead to a, heck, a Juris Doctor, if they so desired. And so it's, you know, we've always had like a two-plus-two or career pathways under school-to-career legislation at the federal level. Right now, we're really looking at pulling this together, developing pathways that are coherent, getting rid of courses in the school district that are singletons, not leading to any kind of a pathway whatsoever. Revamping by partnering with the EDD, looking at pathways that lead somewhere, specifically to high-skill, high-wage jobs in this community. And we've gotten a lot of incredible information from that. And I've given you, I think, in the back of the packet there, some of that information. And you can see that in this county, a graph of the estimated jobs 2002 and then projected 2012 employment for major industries in Santa Barbara County. Leading the way, of course, is government, with professional and business services next, education and health services, retail trade, and we go on down the line. Leisure and hospitality, also another large industry in Santa Barbara County. And the reason we looked very carefully at the county is because most of us that have children here would like our children to stay here, to be part of the community along with us, which is a commendable piece. And so I've put together, I haven't done it, our Career Technical Ed Committee, who's been meeting over the course of this year, has put together the industry sectors that we're most interested in. And I've given you a chart of all of the sectors, the courses that are offered at each of the three high schools. In agriculture, natural resources, arts, media, and entertainment, building trades, construction, education, child development and family services, engineering and design, finance and business, fashion and interior design, health science and medical technologies, hospitality, tourism and recreation, transportation, and work experience. And you can see that it's quite a list with pathways that we're really looking at developing. Now, we know that in the past, we've had comprehensive high schools that have tried to do everything. A wood shop for, you know, every high school, an auto shop for every high school, and so on. Those things have gotten so expensive to do that what we're proposing, and that's why I'm doing this report to you, that as a premise, we're really looking at consolidating these programs. For example, if we're going to have a construction or an auto shop or multimedia academy, we'd do it at one of the high schools, in essence magnetizing those programs so that students would have a choice as they looked at those programs, much like they do now, as a matter of fact. We have many students who do make those choices and do travel across the district. And many travel from Carpinteria, which we're very glad of. So that was a little aside. And so that's kind of the direction that we're moving. We've asked our principals to take a good, close look at their master schedules, to look carefully at the singletons that they have, or courses that don't lead to a certification, that don't lead to a pathway as described in this new federal legislation. And so we'll be working on that over the course of the next couple of years, as we put together our career technical ed plans and we put together our plans for Perkins dollars. Questions?
Yeah, I have a few.
Go ahead, Dr. Noel.
Let me understand, this new program, because this is linked to federal funds, Perkins funds, right?
This is linked both to federal and to state funds for ROPs.
Basically, there's a new mandate that says that... that vocational education now will be called career technical education. That it will have a, that the programs will have more than one or two, as you call them, singleton courses. They'll be coherent, vertically-integrated courses with a capstone at the end of the program.
In high school.
In other words, we're talking, yes, high school. We're talking programmatic, not a piecemeal. Furthermore, that the requirement is that they meet a set of standards that has now been published by the State Board, the career technical education standards.
Framework, yes.
Those standards being, including what they call pathway standards, that are more specific to the particular occupation. And foundational standards, which are the underlying academic skills that are linked to those foundations. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And Dr. Noel, I need to say too, that this is nothing that is new in terms of ideas, actually coming from school-to-career legislation that one of our last Democratic Presidents, Mr. Clinton, proposed. Actually, it came before that, in a Republican.
But what is new is that you now have a timetable to implement this.
Actually, yes. And requirements for the obtaining of funds, and set requirement for that.
And those funds are supplemental funds, are they not?
They are supplemental funds.
So for the funds to be supplemental, there has to be another set of funds which they supplement. And presumably, those are district funds.
Those would be district elective course funds, yes.
So this, so these programs are going to cost the district money?
Not in my mind. We already have many of these programs. We're not going to do it comprehensively across 15 industry sectors, but we're going to be judicious in picking them out.
I'd be interested in knowing the price tags. Now, let me ask you this. Have you read the American Charter School proposal?
Yes, I have.
I think you have, haven't you? Does it, does it, does it sound familiar to you when you compare it to this description that you've made of career technical education and integrated classes? And series of classes with capstone classes?
As the pathways are set up?
Yeah.
I may want to comment on that when I give the report, the staff analysis. But yes, it certainly has to have that-
I didn't see that in your staff analysis, but I'm asking you now. Does not the American Charter School program in construction pretty much sound like what those specifications call for?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I want to comment on it right now. Well, I can comment a little bit. What I don't see is an ROP involvement. I don't see ROP capstoned. I don't know what kind of certifications or curriculum are involved. I don't see introduction and, you know, all the way up the line. There's a lot of things that I will talk about later as part of the staff analysis of the petition. Probably not appropriate to get into that right now.
Okay. And the, these series, you're talking, you list among the ones you're considering a construction program.
We have a construction academy currently.
But your construction academy currently does not meet any of those criteria. Your construction academy, as you're, by your description and by Dr. Sarvas's description, is a couple of ROP courses that are unlinked to anything.
Many of these courses, you're exactly right, don't have that yet. That's why we're meeting, planning, and looking at course sequencing for this district. Probably should have been done eight or nine years ago.
Has there been any suggestion on your committee that maybe you would want to cooperate with the proposal of the American Charter High School to-
Nobody's asked us that yet.
-do this in a cooperative mode?
Yeah, nobody's asked us that yet. I don't know that Santa Barbara City College has even been asked that, and they sit on our committee.
Well, we tried to set up a meeting with Santa Barbara City College, Frank Skipper did. And they declined to meet with us because they said they were afraid that that would offend the Santa Barbara High School district. So we were, we were stymied on trying to do an integrated program from ninth to 12th grade, which I'm quite familiar with, the CTE plan. And to do, if we were to do that, there would be a $250,000 grant sitting out there, ready to be plucked, for an integrated program. And we've been unable to move that way because there's a roadblock there.
Yeah, one of the great-
Aside from that, I wanted to, I was struck as I read this by the similarity to what we are proposing. And I'm now no longer the proposer. I haven't made that clear, but I will in a moment. But what the American Charter School Group is proposing. And I just, well, I guess I heard, maybe my, it was a paranoid fantasy, but I almost had the idea that, golly, maybe they're going to turn this charter school down and seize that public support that's been so overwhelming and put it behind an academy within one of the existing schools. That's just my paranoid fantasy.
I, well, I don't want to play on any paranoid fantasies, Dr. Noel. Some of these, some of these documents are dated December and January. I mean, I hope you noticed that.
I did have, one last thing I wanted to, David, would you show this slide, David, please?
Madam Chair? I'm just a little bit concerned about the position that we're in as a board. If Dr. Noel would like to present information as a proposer or supporter of a proposal, I think that's perfectly appropriate, but I'm not sure it should be done from the board position. And I think at this point, as a board member, we're-
My concern is just that the discussion of American Charter High School is seeping into this discussion.
Exactly.
This was intended to be a prelude.
I'd ask Mr. Price. Mr. Price, are my statements out of order? Are my questions about this report out of order?
It's up to the board to say whether they're out of order. They're not out of compliance with the Brown Act, however.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to show that one slide if I may.
Yeah, a couple more. Oh, do you want to, are you going to show this now? Okay.
Because I was so intrigued by your report that I did some research on it. Oh. That's it?
Well, paper comes a lot better than slides on this. Let me see what I can do with this.
It's a transparency, right?
But the machine takes paper. You could print on plain paper. It would deal with paper better than a transparency.
There we go, there we go. This is Santa Barbara High School. A nine-year history of vocational education offerings. The data points are the little points. The curve, the line of best fit is the downward trend. And I just wanted to put that up to show what has been happening to, to- to career technical education. And there are good, and there are very good historical reasons for that and understandable reasons for that. But it is, it is a, you know, an empirical observation. That's what's been happening. And I fully support the idea that our school system should be offering more career technical education options to students. So I support the work of your committee. I hope you understand that.
Yes, thank you.
Can I, can I just remind us? And I just need to say this for the audience who might be listening also. It's not your committee, it's our committee.
Right.
And it's not your program, it's our program. Other board members, including Dr. Noel, have certainly been on the board a lot longer than I have during the time that this decline was taking place. But it certainly, we need to be aware. I mean, I just feel the need to reinforce that you're not out there running a committee or running programs on your own. These are things that the board has approved. And I just feel uncomfortable calling it yours. It's ours.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Cordero.
I really appreciate that, because I'm not the head of the committee. Michelle Humboldt is leading it. And I'm just reporting out some of what was happening, and using her materials, actually.
I sat with Senator Bruce McClintock at the State Board meeting in the adoption of the new state framework on career and technical programs. And this is a trend that has been occurring throughout the state. In fact, throughout the United States. And when we look at the number of additional electives called for by No Child Left Behind, which are additional English classes and additional math class, it really puts the squeeze on these kinds of courses, as well as our other elective courses.
I think that was my observation, that there's no direct correlation here between a board that is anti-voc ed. I don't think that statement can be made. There is a direct correlation between lack of voc ed classes and the advent of high-stakes testing.
Yes, I would, I would like to-
But my point, Jan, my point is that it is for that reason that there is a resurgence of interest in career vocational education, that this is occurring across the state. And we used to have defined pathways from this course to this course to this course. And we will again go through that process to define those pathways in each of these areas that are called for in the new state framework.
And that's certainly true. And I think we can look at where the dollars have come from and where they've gone away from. And they've certainly gone away from vocational ed and career technical ed. They're on the way back. The pendulum, thank goodness, is swinging back. Because we know most of the jobs are going to be in technical areas, highly skilled technical areas. And I told my kids that, and, you know, pushed them into that arena. Two more, two more pieces that I neglected to talk about. One is that this career technical ed course sequence offered by a district and ROP has to be reviewed every two years by the governing board to make sure that it meets a documented labor market demand, doesn't unnecessarily duplicate other job skill training programs, and is of demonstrated effectiveness as measured by the employment and completion success of its pupils. Further, as a condition of federal funding, Perkins and Successor requires the community college, now, this is beyond the ROP, to develop a plan for developing course sequences that span grades seven to 12, ROPs, and community college vocational ed courses. The community college must consult with school districts and ROPs in the area served by the college and with the local workforce investment board in the development of the plan. And there's a whole series of things that the plan must include. Now, if we really want to have lighthouse programs in these career areas, we would have advisory boards with people who are knowledgeable in the area. For example, in our health career pathway, our medical technology pathway, we'd want to have people advising us on areas, on standards that are in that profession, and where it's going, in all of the different career areas. And there's, oh my gosh, multiple areas in health. We also would want to make sure that we integrated the applied curriculum with the academic curriculum. And that kind of integration is something that I haven't seen before. I was involved actually a while back with a medical program that attempted that as a statewide project. And it was very, very difficult work to integrate lessons with applied and academics to really boost the interest of students. And so that's what I would hold out as a lighthouse for this district as we're looking at these courses, these pathways, and the integration with academics. It's a higher level of learning, in my mind. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, Mr. Zettel. It talks about selecting a slate of paths that meet local needs. And how would that be determined? Strictly by the estimation of jobs that will be available in the county in 2012?
I think we can look very carefully at that as we work with EDD. They have a number of data points that they've offered us, from the number of jobs available to the kind of industry as we look forward, what kind of jobs may be coming into the area. While it's not exact science, it's something that we can take into account. We probably, you know, there are career areas that we would not want to enter into because we would be preparing our students for a career area that had very few jobs. And that wouldn't be fair to students, to set them up like that. So we have to be very judicious in the programs that we are bringing in.
Okay. And then my other question is, can you give me an example of a singleton or a dead end? I mean, I can look through the course descriptions, but are we, when we're looking at dropping those, is there going to be an analysis? For instance, Dr. Noel mentioned the construction academy. I certainly think that we should be examining that particular career pathway. When you're looking at singletons or dead ends, would you be looking at just dropping them or looking at their value to the community and then fleshing those out to link them up with other programs?
Well, I think those, that's the decision. First of all, we'd look at fleshing them out. We'd look at the applicability of that career area to this, you know, to the community. And if indeed, it was something that we wanted to have that looked like it was going to be a burgeoning area in terms of jobs and high-skill, high-wage, we'd look at fleshing that out. If not, if it was something that, you know, our kids would have to travel to Indonesia to get a job, I don't want my kids in Indonesia. You know, I'd cut that singleton out.
Okay.
I know, they may be going there.
And then my other question is-
Nothing, it's too far away.
ROP puts limits on the number of courses that they will allow us.
Yes, they have a cap.
Okay, because for instance, education is going to be a fairly high-demand profession. And I assume they're talking about elementary and secondary education because that's where the largest numbers of jobs are. ROP has a class in North County, but they wouldn't allow us to have an Intro to Education class in South County. Is that correct? I mean, there are certain limitations that the Regional Occupation Program places on these programs as well. Okay. Okay. So that would be, that would be a limitation as well?
That would be a limitation. It's a little frustrating. You know, the other-
It's zero-sum right now because of their funding. If you want to add an ROP course, you're going to have to take out an ROP course, which makes it a little difficult for ROP directors.
The piece that's so unique to this district currently is the dual enrollment courses that can act as a capstone. And it's a partnership that is unique in the whole state of California that I know about, the partnership with City College. We have well over 100, probably upwards of 140, 150, dual enrollment courses where students get college credit and high school credit. And they're taking a college-level course at their high school, or some of them at the college. That's incredible, and can be a capstone course.
Right. Thank you. Any other board questions? Ms. Cordero?
Yeah, I have more of a logistical question. And that is, and it may be my own learning style, that graphics are always, I like text. But the, I found it difficult to correlate the charts related to the courses that are offered on the individual high schools to the list of areas that you had identified in the previous set of charts. Am I making myself clear?
You're being very clear. And it's a problem that's occurred back and forth. This is an EDD chart, as you see. And they don't, they don't always correlate with educational sectors as we look at it, or, you know, career pathways.
And for example, the section that came, where you have occupational employment projections, Santa Barbara Metropolitan Statistical Area, and it's broken down by sort of major categories?
Yes.
And then, this is what I thought I understood you to indicate about these charts. Then, the courses that are listed in the individual school sites are courses that would somehow be meeting one of those areas. Is that correct?
Well, these are occupational titles. And they all need to be fit into some kind of a coherent piece within the industry sectors. And within each of the 15 industry sectors, there are many, many career paths. So we're trying to figure this all out in our meetings. We've had about four or five meetings now because of this legislation.
Let me just tell you what my confusion is. Is, for example, when we look at a class, it would be somewhat easy for me to figure out, I think, what area of, what career path a class like Intro to Food Services would be related to.
Right.
That's, I think, pretty, pretty clear. But, for example, Beginning Latin, it's harder to recognize what career- But, for example, Beginning Latin, it's harder to recognize what career path that would necessarily be related to. So I'm just wondering if, when these classes were being teased out of the schedule as classes that somehow fit in, was there a specific area that was identified for that class?
Within our elective program, we have a multitude of departments. We have Performing and Visual Arts. We have Foreign Language. We have Career Technical Ed. We have, help me out here, many more. But these were only courses that were identified within that department, the ones that we teased out of this, only the Career Technical Ed and Industrial Arts.
Okay. I think that makes it a little clearer to me. I thought they were coming from different departments.
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions by board members? No? Thank you, Mr. Zettel.
Yes.
And now we'll get to the main event of the evening, the item that most of our audience members are here for. Item E1 on our action agenda is approval or denial of petition for American Charter High School. And I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Sarvis.
I'd like to put this in perspective because I think we need to understand what the board's role is in considering the American Charter High School petition. It is not the board's role to decide whether they like it or don't like it. It is, in fact, the board's role to consider the petition in light of specific education code criteria. In fact, by our own board policy, we have embraced the intent of the legislature to adopt charter programs if they meet the following conditions. And in fact, let me say it in a different way, that a school district governing board should grant a charter for the operation of the school unless it does not meet these conditions, unless the charter school presents an unsound educational program, unless the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program, unless the petition does not contain the number of signatures required, or unless the petition does not contain an affirmation of the conditions provided for in the ed code or a specific description, a reasonably comprehensive description of all of the 16 elements called for in the education code. The board really has three options. And tonight, this was placed on the action agenda in consideration for, to oblige the request of Dr. Noel to act promptly on the petition.
I think it was placed on the action agenda because there was a majority vote to place it there, was there not?
And it was in response to your request.
I made the motion, but it was a corporate action.
Yes. It was that the board decided to oblige your request to act promptly on the petition. Am I correct?
I'm sorry, what?
That the board decided to oblige your request to act promptly on the petition.
You can put it that way if you wish. Do you usually characterize a three to two vote by obliging someone's request? I don't, but whatever you like.
I don't think we need to quibble over that. The fact is that the board does have until May 12 to make a decision on the petition. And I'm going to ask in a moment for Mr. Price to address the issue of timelines, but I do need to make some other points. The board has, and I'll return to those, the board has three options. One is to approve the charter petition without conditions. The other is to approve the charter petition contingent upon the petitioner satisfying certain conditions, and that could be done in an MOU process. In fact, we have a rich relationship with other charter schools in the districts, and we have MOUs that call for various things so that it satisfies the board's concerns about their charters. Or the board can, based upon the facts outlined in our report or based on other findings on the part of the board, can reject the petition. Those are really the three options that we're faced with tonight. Now, as I said before, we are advised by our attorney, Paul Mini, that we have until May 12 to act on the charter petition. So I would invite Mr. Price to address the issue of timelines. Before you do, let me also make a statement because I've read, in fact, I've been surprised to read a number of articles, op-ed pieces, that describe the board as hostile to charter schools. Well, I don't think you would describe our relationship with our three existing charter schools as hostile. I was also surprised to read that I called charters financial parasites. Now, those are not my words, although we might consider those words, but that also is not up for discussion tonight. The economic impact on the district is not one of those conditions to be considered by a board. Instead, it is only those that are spelled out by the ed code. Mr. Price, would you please address the issue of timelines?
In terms of the timing, if the petition is approved outright or with the conditions that have been recommended by staff, then the petition moves forward and the various conditions presumably would be worked out and hopefully met prior to the beginning of school, which by law for new charter schools is given a date of September 30, 2007. However, if the petition is denied, then the first appellate step that the charter group has is to appeal the denial to the County Board of Education. And by law, the County Board ordinarily has 60 days within which to act and make a decision whether to sustain the denial of the district or to overturn it. In certain cases, the County Board can extend that 60-day period by an additional 30 days. The next step, should the County Board deny the appeal, would be for there to be recourse to the State Board of Education. In that situation, the State Board of Education by law is required to act within 180 days, meaning six months. In addition to the appeal timeframe, which obviously would impact, depending on where an appeal would wind up, the proposed start date for the new charter school as well as the state planning grant that was received. But an additional timeline that is germane is the fact that for an approved new charter, there must be a submission to the California Department of Education in a timely way that would allow the State Board of Education to review and approve the numbering of the new school, which is a prerequisite for obtaining what's called advance apportionment, which means that the school gets funded. And the critical time path, as I understand it, and I'm sure that the charter supporters have done their own research, but my understanding is that the last date that the State Board of Education would meet and would be in a position to approve a new school number for this charter school, and by the same token, the advance apportionment, would be its meeting of July 11 and July 12. In order to get the required information before the State Board, there would have to be a submission by the charter group after the approval by this board or on appeal on or before May 23 in order for that to happen. And I want to be clear, when I mention going to the State Board of Education for purposes of getting advanced apportionment, I'm not talking about a further review having to do with the merits or possibly the demerits of this particular charter. If the application for a school number goes to the State Board of Education, it's in effect a ministerial act, and the State Board of Education does not conduct this kind of a review or in fact, anything but an extremely limited review. So bottom line, if there is a denial by this board, there's a 60-day period ordinarily within which an appeal could be taken and the County Board must act. And in addition, there is a requirement that by May 23, that an approval of the charter petition be submitted with appropriate paperwork to the California Department of Education in order to get on the July agenda of the State Board of Education in order to obtain advanced apportionment, which is very important funding.
Yeah, Ms. Malakoff has a question for you, Mr. Price.
So we have, do we have a choice tonight of providing or asking for questions or delaying the vote until two weeks or so? Could we do that?
Yes, by law, you have until May 12 to make a decision. Depending upon your deliberations, you have the option of continuing the vote in terms of making your fundamental decision on an up or a down vote. And alternatively, if you decided, for example, that you were looking at approving the petition but wish to have further delineation of certain conditions that you might want to direct staff to further develop, you could ask that the matter be brought back so that those conditions could be further developed and approved by your board at the same time that the petition was granted.
Thank you.
We were originally scheduled to take action on this item on April 24, and that got pushed forward. And I'm still trying to figure out why it got pushed forward, if this could have gone to the State Board in July anyway. Was there any reason for us to be rushed on this?
I believe we were accommodating Dr. Noel's request for prompt action.
Dr. Noel, was there a reason for us to rush on this?
You may differ with that.
The, part of what Mr. Price says is, I'm not sure it's consistent with what our attorney, Greg Mosier, says, what the American Charter Schools attorney says about that timing. And I think that the Charter School Group would probably want to have the opportunity to hear what he says. I think you should ask them about their sense of timing and voting because I think that they have strong feelings about the priorities and about the need for actions.
Okay. Mr. Price, if the board takes action tonight and it approves the petition, can it appear on the agenda for the May 9th and 10th meeting of the State Board of Education?
My recollection is, from looking at the CDE website, that the deadline date for the May State Board of Education submission would have passed, but I'm just going by recollection. I can check that as we go a little bit further and get back to you with that in a little bit.
Okay, Dr. Sarvis, do you want to continue?
Well, to proceed, I again sought the consultation of Paul Mini, our charter attorney, about how to help the board through this process. We were faced at that point with a presentation specifically of this petition. We had also heard a presentation from another group that was interested in a charter. And Paul Mini advised us to conduct a staff analysis of the charter petition. You present that to the board, let the board consider those issues, consider other issues from the board, and let the board make its findings. So I'd like to proceed with that process. I will say that since the petition was presented by a board member, and I have four board, five board members in total, I have stayed out of that process. So primarily Jan Zettel in conjunction with Paul Mini's office has, Jan has been conducting the study. And I'd like Jan Zettel, then, our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education to present that report.
I just have to object, even Dr. Sarvis and I disagree on this, but if you've got a copy of the petition, I'd like to see, is my name on there as a petitioner?
Well, it was no surprise that it was your petition. You presented it. You stood up and presented it to the board.
But we're talking about, we're talking about who, in fact, in point of law, is making this petition. And I'm not on that list. Now, I may have had a great deal to do with the writing of it, but but there are any number of consultants that one can hire who will write petitions for people and do on a routine basis. I did it for free. But it is a separate issue to say that I am a petitioner. I'm not a petitioner. And I have that ruling from the attorney that is the attorney for the American Charter School. I have that ruling from my personal attorney. And just, and as long as we're on this topic, let me make it very clear that I occupy no position of authority on American Charter School. I have no vote in American Charter School. And I today, the last possible link is that I am the, what's called the authorized agent for the $405,000 grant. And I today filed papers that removed my name as that agent, and Michael Zarotti, the treasurer for the American Charter School, is now that agent. And the bank account was transferred from my name to his name and will become, of course, a bank account that's part of the corporate entity, wants the corporate papers and what. So I have no legal connection with American Charter School.
Dr. Noel, I appreciate your defense. I don't think any of your fellow board members have challenged your right to vote on this.
But the superintendent is, and I'm talking about that.
I think he was saying he was feeling conflicted.
The superintendent keeps making me the charter mover, and it makes a big deal to him, and I keep saying, I'm not the charter mover.
Well, gee, Bob, we were all here in the meeting when you stood up and gave the presentation. I can't pretend that didn't happen.
I gave the, which one?
The first.
One of many.
Why don't we move forward, please?
Yeah, I don't think that that hardly matters at this point.
Well, these are legal issues that our attorneys can work out, but
Well, I mean, it's
I can assure you that the position you're promulgating, Dr. Sarvis.
Ms. Cordero, may I ask that we simply move forward with the discussion?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cordero and fellow, and board members, not fellow board members. Here I am again.
Mrs. Harder, I think you want to thank.
What did I say? Oh, my gosh. Take a deep breath, Mr. Zettel, and we'll begin. Okay. This is a lengthy document, and it's a very complex document with some not overgeneralized statements. And so what I am going to do is to assume that the board has gone over this. And if you have not, you might follow along. What I'm going to do is only hit on the large points, but know that within each of the five areas, there are many points. I won't be hitting all of them. Otherwise, I'd be reading the entire document to you, and I don't think you want to listen to me that long. So let me be very clear about the staff's role in this. First of all, I need to say that the organizers of this petition for the American Charter High School have put in many, many hours of hard work on this endeavor. They deserve recognition for their commitment to improving educational opportunities. The analysis which follows is not intended to denigrate those efforts in any way. The role of staff, and I'm going to, you've got to understand this at the outset as you listen to what I'm going, to what's coming, to what's going to follow. Staff's role in reviewing the petition is to present to board with information upon
Staff's role in reviewing the petition is to present the board with information upon which it can either approve or deny the petition. Under applicable law, a petition which contains the required elements must be approved by the board unless the board makes one or more of five allowable findings, each of which must be supported by specific facts. This report is intended to present the board with the staff's analysis of the petition and the program it proposes, taking into account the specific areas that the board must examine and to address any concerns in order to give the Board of Education a basis for taking action to disapprove the petition if it so determines. On the other hand, since there are no comparable required findings for approval of the charter petition, the staff report does not attempt to describe the various positive attributes of the petition. The board may either approve or deny the petition. And if the board determines to deny the petition, the concerns that are described herein may be found by the board to support its decision in reference to the findings that need to be made. On the other hand, should the board determine to approve the petition, the report lists various conditions for approval that are recommended by staff. We have reviewed this petition in light of all of the various codes of the Santa Barbara School District's Board Policy and Administrative regs for Charter Schools with additional reference to the State Board of Ed Model Charter School Application and State Board of Ed regs for review of a charter school petition on appeal. The five elements that we needed to analyze this petition for are listed on page two. And the elements are these. The charter school presents an unsound educational program for the pupils to be enrolled in the charter school. Number two, the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the petition. Number three, the petition does not contain the number of signatures required by subdivision A of the code. Number four, the petition does not contain an affirmation of each of the conditions described in subdivision D of Ed Code 47605. And the petition does not contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of all of the 16 elements set forth in that Ed Code. Now, these are the five areas. And for you to disapprove this, we need to find findings of fact in the petition itself to deny, to deny. And you may deny this petition based on one or more of these five areas. And here we go. The analysis was conducted by the three assistant superintendents and directors that sit on the cabinet and also with the help of Craig Price's office and Paul Minnie's office. As you can see, the overall recommendation is that the charter petition for ACHS cannot be considered or approved by the board because petitioners have failed to satisfy the Ed Code Section 47605A1, which requires that before the petition can be submitted, it has to be signed by a number of teachers that is equivalent to at least one-half of the number of teachers that the charter school estimates will be employed at the school during its first year of operation. And I'm going to talk about a little more, in a little more detail, that analysis. This is perhaps being picky, but perhaps not. I mean, we have to, we have to really look carefully at every aspect of this and what is in the petition. And I'm going to kind of outline for you what the law says about required signatures and required certification by the state of California. Assuming satisfaction of the signature requirement, there's an adequate basis upon which the board could find if it's so determined that the charter petition doesn't present a sound educational program. There is adequate basis upon which the board could find if it's so determined that the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program. Without auxiliary clarification, there is an adequate basis upon which the board can find if it's so determined that the petition doesn't contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of the 16 required elements as will be outlined below. Three options, and we've stated these. The board can approve the petition without conditions. The board can disapprove without conditions. Or the board can, based upon findings of fact, add conditions to a conditional approval. So three different ways that we can go. So requirement one, a district shall not deny a charter school petition unless the board finds that the charter school presents an unsound educational program for the pupils to be enrolled in the charter school. And I won't go into the code, it's listed on page three. The recommended finding by staff in the analysis is that the petition lacks sufficient detail as to the educational program, which makes it impossible to determine whether the school would be of educational benefit to the students or whether it would present the likelihood of physical, educational, or psychological harm to its students. So many issues. The intended curriculum is vague and unsettled, several references to students taking even core classes via online learning or at district schools and local colleges. It presents insufficient information regarding plans to serve English learners, low-achieving students, high-achieving students. The petition's plan for serving students with special ed needs doesn't demonstrate that there is an understanding of the legal requirements involved in serving special ed students. And the description of and plan to acquire facilities is also insufficient, as are the plans to staff the school. In addition, given that the petitioners are proposing a plan where their students participate in training exercises and take classes at other district high schools and local colleges, all of which require the students to frequently leave campus and travel by themselves, the petition does not provide any information at all as to how the school will ensure the physical health and safety of these students while in transit and off-campus during the school day. Goes on to talk about a tentative curriculum for construction academy. There is none provided really for the liberal arts program or the public safety emergency preparedness programs that is scheduled to come onboard the following year. Let me touch on a few other things. There's adequate basis upon which the board can find if it's so determined that the lack of any established facility raises serious issues concerning the ability of students to be situated in an adequate learning environment. Since the petition was not brought forth until beyond the allowable period and wished to be eligible to make a facilities request to the school district under Prop 39 for the 2007-2008 school year and because all the high school sites will be at or near capacity in terms of population, and again, I need to say with many district teachers having to be roving teachers without their own classrooms, it does not appear to be possible to provide space in district facilities to the charter high school for the 0708 school year. This finding applies to the 0708 school year and should the charter petition be approved, the petitioners could submit a timely and complete application under Ed Code 476144 facilities in 0809. In addition, the second choice, La Cumbre Junior High, would not provide access to the district high school courses that the charter has said that it would like its students to enroll in. As part of its review, staff has therefore determined that no adequate space is available without substantially compromising other programs. We'll go on to requirement two, and I, I think I do need to say that classes that are self-contained or not in the charter, it, I found the petition to waffle on the question really of whether the new school will be dependent on the district to provide classes. The petition said that this is an option and we need to realize, board, that the district is under no obligation to provide any instruction to charter students and it'd be very unusual were it to agree to do so. And we can, I think, enter into further discussion with the charter group about this If, if indeed the charter group is relying upon the utilization of district courses, that is a basis for denial, again, under requirement number one, since it means that they can't successfully implement. Also reflects upon the quality of the program. Excuse me. Okay, let's go on to requirement two. A district shall not deny a charter school petition unless the board finds that the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the petition. The recommended finding, and that goes on, it lists a whole lot of requirements under that recommendation too, and I won't go into that currently, just give you the recommended finding. We found that also there is an adequate basis upon which the board could find if it's so determined that the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth because the charter petition doesn't provide sufficient information regarding the backgrounds and levels of experience of the founding group. The educational program does not reflect any ongoing collaboration with other individuals who have the necessary background in charter school curriculum, instruction, assessment, and business management. Merely stating that the petitioners have visited the school and are receiving, quote, "guidance" from other technical school operators doesn't guarantee that the petitioners will have a reliable, committed person able to provide them with the necessary expertise in the long term. Several named partners whom the staff has connected indicated that no one listed on the charter petition as asked for a partnership or as inquired as to the feasibility of one, specifically the Regional Occupation Program and Santa Barbara Community College. And it goes on, again, to describe the facilities that it would be difficult to utilize. The petition asks only and proposes to use three classrooms and three rooms suitable for tutorials and faculty meetings, a construction lab, and a school office. There is no provision in this petition for areas where the students will take part in physical ed, gather outside of class, eat lunch, no provision for areas where the teachers can work during the times they're not teaching unless petitioners intend for them to work out of the school office. Given that all three classrooms will be in use at all times. In addition, there's no provision for computer labs to be used by students taking the online courses, though the petitioners propose to spend money from their startup grant to purchase the computers, raising the question of whether this expenditure was included in their startup grant application budget. There are no science labs indicated for students taking the science courses, classes required for the University of California and CSU systems, and cited to in the charter petition. And moreover, because the petitioners don't provide an average class size or state which grade levels they plan to serve in their first year of operation, it's unclear whether the three classrooms will be sufficient. And then it goes on to state, you know, some issues with the times that they indicated that they wanted to use this classroom space. Goes on to cite further evidence of a lack of adequate financial base. The budget shows first-year operations are dependent upon a loan or other transfer-in of $250,000. And, and I can only assume that's possibly from the charter school revolving loan fund whose application deadline is April 30th. So that's an issue that may need to be dealt with. Statement on page 19 of the multi-year strategic fiscal plan says that the high school will obtain a local line of credit from a local financial institution, but no evidence that this avenue has been pursued or that any initial research or contacts have been made. Also, evidence of established community support base and pledge support for the school has been committed by several community groups with additional pledges made by several donors hasn't been demonstrated with evidence of these commitments. That was a very general statement. Also, no evidence is contained in the petition that there is adequate employment potential leading from career tech programs that are proposed to justify the program. Absent such evidence, it'd be counterproductive to direct students away from other opportunities and train them for employment opportunities which don't exist in the area. Excuse me, I go on to cite a review of the State Department of Employment Development data that shows that there are only 13 annual openings expected in the fire service annually in Santa Barbara County. Currently, there are only three such openings within 100-mile radius of the 93102 ZIP code. One in Rosamont, Mojave, and one in Port Juaniemi. Oh, two in Rosamont, I'm sorry. Similarly, a review of the data for various construction jobs shows a similar lack of opportunity. Opportunity in both those areas are greatest in areas where there is significant growth, which is not a feature of this area. As a result, it may be difficult for the petitioners to attract enough students to be able to successfully implement the program. Requirement three, a district shall not deny a charter school petition unless the board finds that the petition doesn't contain the signatures of either a number of parents or guardians of pupils that is equivalent to at least one-half of the number of pupils that the charter school estimates will enroll in the school for its first year operation. Or a number of teachers that is equivalent to at least one-half of the number of teachers that the charter school estimates will be employed at the school during its first year of operation. And this is an issue. When we investigated the three signatures and the names of the people that were submitted to be teachers, we found that only one currently has current K-12 certification. One has Colorado certification, had applied for a California credential in January and is awaiting. The law is a little unclear about that. And so the recommendation from staff would be that we ask for the credentials of people that have been hired to teach for this school, if you do approve this petition, that they be able to show you those credentials. And if not, that would be a reason to deny right there. The other person has a, an EDD, a doctorate in education, but no credential. And so the petition as sent to us has one signature that's a good one. Requirement four, a district, oh, the other, the other piece, and I, I'm a little unclear on the point of laws, so I may ask Craig about this. If the number of teachers is given and there are at least half of the teachers that are proposed in the startup with, with good signatures and good credentials, then they don't need to have 50% of meaningfully interested students that are proposed?
It's that there, the proposal calls for there to be four teachers. The law says that the signatures to be submitted either come from
Meaningfully interested students or teachers. In this case, the petitioners have offered three signatures. They're required to have two valid signatures of teachers who are, quote, "meaningfully interested," close quote, under the statute. The statute also says, 47605L, that teachers in charter schools are required to have a valid California credential.
The question becomes whether, in the absence of the required two signatures from teachers with valid, valid California credentials, the board can or should approve the petition. As Mr. Zettel was alluding to, just in the last couple of days, in order to try and advance the ball to hopefully help the board out a little bit, because we had no information with respect to one individual whose name wasn't even legible until going back through notes from the last hearing and piecing it together. And we had no information with respect to whether the person that was listed as a teacher in Colorado was even in a position to advance the ball and, and obtain her certification or credential prior to the beginning of the school year. That was the case when the staff report was finalized very hurriedly, as you well know, in order to try and provide for advanced distribution on Friday. But since that time, we've ascertained that the Colorado teacher actually has applied for credentialing through the county office of education. And we're told that it is altogether likely that she'll receive that credentialing by or before this summer and that that will be approved. In light of this additional information and in view of there being some uncertainty as to whether a credential actually needs to be in place at the time the petition is signed, it would be our recommendation that that not be a basis for outright denial. Instead, it would be very appropriate for there to be a condition. And in fact, when, when and if you get to that point down the road, I've modified the language of one of the conditions in the staff report to adequately take that into account. That is to say that there has to be a demonstration from the charter school That is to say that there has to be a demonstration from the charter school some number of days prior to the beginning of school that it has an adequately credentialed staff.
Thank you, Mr. Price. There's an opinion by the chief legal counsel for the Department of Education that interprets the teacher credential requirement as follows. The teacher credentialing for charter schools is required only for teachers of core courses, and that teachers of non-core courses need not be credentialed. And I don't have that reference on the top of my head, Mr. Price, but I do have it in my notes at home.
No, and I'm aware of that general principle, and we're in agreement on that. When we're talking about, for example, some of the proposed career technology classes that would start up in the fall relating to the construction program, then that can be taught by non-credentialed people. But obviously, there are a great number of core classes, and there was only one signature presented by a teacher that had an appropriate credential. So in doing the due diligence that I know your board expects us to do, we wanted to be sure that a petition that was presented and that the most updated information that we could obtain showed that there was a likelihood that you would be able to, you, I shouldn't say you, there I go again, but that the charter group would be able to present an adequately credentialed staff. And so that's the recommendation in terms of a condition. In other words, not tonight, but 15 days prior to the opening of school, if the petition is approved, that there needs to be a demonstration that you have the staff that is adequately credentialed and capable of meeting the curriculum.
Or 30 days, as it were, prior to opening. Thanks. I'll move on. Recommendation, or, excuse me, requirement four, the recommended finding is that the element has been met. Requirement five, the petition does not contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of all of the 16 elements set forth in ed code and Santa Barbara School District Administrative Reg and Title V California Code of regs. What is your pleasure on going through all 16 of these? Would you like me to go through all 16? I'm glad to do that.
I do not think it is necessary, but I don't know if other board members would like you to. Yes or no?
I've read it.
I think so, we. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zettel.
One last piece then, and this is available for everyone to look at in terms of the issues, or, quote, to quote Mr. Price, the demerits of the petition in all of the 16 areas. You can look carefully at that. I need to further say that teachers will need to be highly qualified under NCLB, and if they're teaching students that are English learners, will need to have certification for that also, a cloud piece to their credential, which I don't know if that's going to be an issue for an out-of-state teacher or not, but that is an issue. I think the final piece, and I won't go over each of these, these the board can look at as recommendations should the board approve this. These are conditions under which the staff would like to recommend to you that you follow these. There are others also, and I can go a little bit further into some of these things. In terms of recommendations, if you do approve the charter with recommendations, I would ask that the school be prepared to provide a complete course of instruction separate from and apart from the district that covers the spectrum of the curriculum. They mentioned pre-AP, AP, a number of core courses, and because I have not seen many, and neither has the legal officer Paul Minnie, many charters that, or any charters that they knew of that were dependent on a district for courses, which can especially happen in a high school. It's very difficult to put together a high school master schedule. That we look carefully at that issue, because there is no, we can't charge tuition. Public education in California is free, and those charter school students, being part of the charter, but yet taking the seats of students in the district, I would have us think about that carefully. If the board approves the charter, I would ask as another condition that the school be prepared to provide its own facility for '07-'08. And one of the things that I know is critical to any kind of a charter school anywhere, whether it's elementary or secondary, is a good leader. And I would, as part of the preconditions, really look carefully at who the person is, can they rally, you know, the school together, and can they make it work? Because a good principal can do that.
Can I ask a question? Have you ever heard of a part-time leader for a school such as this? They're suggesting a part-time principal. I'm wondering whether that has anything, you've ever heard of such a thing?
I have heard of that. I've heard of dual high school principals, where there's two of them that, parrot, I've heard of, actually, there is a school in San Juan Batista, a little tiny school district in Monterey County that has no administrators. They're not a charter, but that is the case. Interesting little place. Okay, there's several others, but I'm gonna let the conversation begin.
Thanks, Mr. Zettel. Ms. Solis, when we announced Ewan, you sprang up. It sounds like you have some comments that you wish to make, and then we will take public comment.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. Sarvis. My name is Martha Solis, co-chair of the Board of Directors for American Charter High School. First and foremost, on behalf of ACHS founding members, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to make a final appeal requesting the approval of our charter. Your attorney has prepared a review of the petition, and our attorney has responded accordingly. I will read a letter addressed to you, Madam President. On behalf of the American Secondary Charter School petitioners, we have reviewed the petition submitted to you, to your district, for a new charter school to be established. Indeed, we recommend, we commented upon a draft of the petition and recommend that changes designed to ensure that the charter as proposed to you not only meets all legal requirements, but conforms to current best practices among charter schools. In our opinion, the charter petition presented to you fully complies with California law and can be approved without changes or conditions. We have reviewed the proposed conditions of approval prepared by district staff. These conditions are not required to make the charter legally compliant, in our opinion. However, if the charter petitioners are prepared to accept them, we believe they are workable with minor modifications. Our recommended revisions to those conditions are attached for your consideration. Our conclusions regarding this charter are based upon our more than 12 years of experience working with dozens of charter schools throughout California, ranging from the University of California's Price School to the high-tech high schools, including the only statewide charter. Our work for the California Charter Schools Association and our work on behalf of a number of school districts, we urge you to approve this charter petition without conditions. If the additional conditions suggested by your staff provide comfort to you, we recommend they can be modified as shown in the attached document, and you each will have a copy. Before you make your decision, I want to share with you the response we have received in favor of this school for the Santa Barbara community.
30 seconds.
It has been overwhelming. We have heard from many parents who need this educational option for their kids, but also from people who experienced firsthand the benefit of having this kind of vocational instruction when they were in school. I would like to read a list of civic leaders that support the approval of this charter. Marty Bloom, Harriet Miller, Brian Barnwell, Babatunde Foteami, Aya Falcone, Gil Garcia, Roger Horton, Bill Brown, Das Williams, Saluk Harbaha, Camerino Sanchez, and Joe Armandares. Now I have the distinct honor to introduce a member of our community who follows the business of public education and counts himself among the supporters for the American Charter High School, distinguished professor of physics at UCSB and winner of the 1998 Nobel Prize in Chemistry, Professor Walter Kohn.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Walter Kohn, professor emeritus and research professor of physics and chemistry at UCSB. I was delighted when I became aware of a plan to augment the existing excellence in the Barbara High Schools by a new kind of school, smaller than a typical high school, and which would offer a choice of two career technical programs, each combined with basic liberal arts courses, as well as an independent liberal arts program. The underlying philosophy of the proposed school is that different students, in order to be motivated and to succeed, need different kinds of education. That same philosophy was the basis of the famous master plan for higher education of the state of California, which for almost 50 years has guided California, has guided California's widely acclaimed post-secondary education. A simple personal example. In my own high school, mathematics was usually taught very academically, bone dry. I hated it, and I nearly failed. The only subject in which I nearly failed. Fortunately, I was rescued by two scintillating teachers that showed me the connection with the real world. I am now a professional mathematical physicist and mathematical chemist. The proposed school, following the example of numerous similar and successful schools in the state and in the nation, will make self-fulfilled individuals who contribute usefully to our community and to other communities, individuals who, without such a program, might well end up as failures or worse. Thank you very much.
We are honored by your presence, and we will do our best to warrant your support. Thank you very much. There are four letters in particular that we would like to share with you tonight, and I present to you board member Donna Baranco Fisher.
Good evening to the school board trustees. My name is Donna Baranco Fisher. I'm a retired principal, and I'm on the board of American Charter High School. I'm going to read you the first letter from Marty Bloom. I'm writing in support of the proposed American Charter School. Communities all over the country are dealing with increased gang activity and violence in their schools and cities. In addition, students are dropping out of school at an alarming rate, which does no good to the community or to the individual. This week, California Governor Schwarzenegger held a summit with mayors and police chiefs to address this issue. He said, quote, "We need alternatives to gang activity and career tech education so kids can find jobs and careers that interest them. We have to make education relevant to keep them in school and reduce dropouts," end quote. I could not have said it better. The proposed American Charter School will have a curriculum that is of high interest to the students and has a great possibility of producing jobs for the students in construction and public safety. This is good for the community and for the individuals at the same time. It is vital that the new curriculum encompasses the state standards so that if a student decides partway through the charter school that he or she wants to go to a UC or a CSU, there will be a way to do that. I understand that is part of the proposal, but I cannot emphasize enough that this be included. At age 14, students don't always know what they want and should be encouraged to try different things until they land on something. Lastly, I appreciate all the work various members of the community have put into this proposal. I believe it would be a perfect proposal if the new curriculum were added to a high school already in existence, but if making a charter school makes this more viable, then I am for it. I encourage you to support this idea in the Santa Barbara School District. Our children deserve a choice. This is a letter from Michael Tobes. I urge you to approve the petition for the American Charter High School. There is a shortage of skilled workers in the construction industry and an even worse shortage of skilled workers who have also had a good basic education. We in the industry had high hopes for the construction academy at Dos Pueblos High School, only to see it wither on the vine. The program proposed for the American Charter High School is just what's needed. With the $400,000 grant from the state, it can hit the ground running. Every effort should be made to ensure its success. As you know, a small percentage of students graduate from college, and yet secondary school education focuses almost entirely on courses leading to a college education. We desperately need vocational training programs in the high schools. I would like to add my voice to that of the Irvine Foundation and others in support of more extensive vocational training. The proposed American Charter High School is sorely needed. Please approve its charter. Thank you.
I'm Mike Zerotti. I'm the treasurer of the American Charter High School. This is a letter from former Mayor Harriet Miller. I am writing in support of the proposal to create American Charter High School. As I understand it, it addresses our need for skilled workers in the construction industry and also addresses the need of all children for a well-rounded education in core academic subjects. I believe that our schools must continue the effort to prepare as many students as possible for college, but I also believe that vocational programs need to be strengthened for the many students who will not be going to college. What good fortune it is that American Charter High School has $400,000 just for that purpose. I urge you to approve the charter petition without delay and to do all that is necessary to assure the success of the school.
I will read a letter by Cam Sanchez. I am writing in support of the proposal to establish a charter high school with a focus on young people whose needs can be met better in a more personal, small setting. Santa Barbara has no public school now. I know from my many contacts with parents that the school will serve a real community need and be met with widespread acceptance and support. This school promises exactly what many parents have long wanted, a safe place that will get their kids involved in learning and counter some of the pressures that they feel from teen culture. Parents want their kids to be self-disciplined and to take responsibility. They seek for their children what they themselves have not been able to have. They want them to learn to be competent at managing their lives and to learn marketable skills. College may be beyond the dreams of many, but only because it has been beyond their reach. This school opens the possibility of marketable skills and college. I particularly like the career aspects of the proposal, especially the public safety and emergency preparedness academy. Our explorer program and the academy will nicely complement one another. My department stands ready to provide guidance in the design and implementation of the academy's program. We are well networked with public safety and emergency preparedness communities at city, county, and state levels. We can help connect the academy with organizations, expertise, and training resources, and we will be glad to share our experience with students. We have seen how programs We have seen how programs of this kind have turned young lives around. In sum, I believe that American Secondary is an idea whose time has come. I urge you to help make it a reality." I now present Board Member Karen Phillips.
Good evening. My name is Karen Phillips. I'm here tonight, and I'm on the Board of the American Charter High School because I strongly believe that as a community, we need to search for, create, and support educational options for our kids. As the parent of four children, I know that children learn differently from one another, have different strengths and different goals and aspirations. As a former School Board Trustee for a local elementary district, I understand the myriad pulls on already overstretched resources, but I believe that this charter school is a worthwhile endeavor. It will create an environment where many kids who have drifted throughout their school career can become anchored and engaged with their own education and their own prospects for the future. This is a place where students can gain confidence in their abilities and find their way towards attaining a fulfilling, productive adulthood. This charter school will make sense of education for many students who have lost or who never had an understanding of what their education is for. This is true for kids in all three programs. Much time was spent at last month's meeting talking about the construction and public safety programs. The liberal arts program was not discussed in as much detail. This is partially because we do not intend to reinvent the wheel. Our students will master the A through G standards that define liberal arts from the perspective of the UC/CSU system. What we will also do is provide all the same benefits of a smaller school, as well as a closely guided path to achievement. This program will appeal to students who don't necessarily want to study what the other programs offer, but who would benefit from an approach wherein the giant steps are broken down into more manageable baby steps. Some teenagers already know what they want and how to get there. For some of those who don't, breaking down perceived barriers and guiding them through the process is the difference between being willing to try and giving up. In the liberal arts program, students will take two pre-advanced placement courses as electives in order to prepare them for the final AP course. This preparation is academic, but also gives the confidence to attempt the AP courses that are so important later in college admission. The shared sense of purpose and camaraderie that develop in the smaller setting of a charter school can be the factor that changes their lives. In conclusion, we know that charter schools are by nature somewhat experimental. They may impact the district finances somewhat, and they may appear to offer duplicative services. That is why the state explicitly mandates that districts encourage charter schools and prohibits districts from turning them down based on those factors. Charter schools are not education, as we are already doing it, and that is exactly why I request that the Board allow us the freedom to create this eminently worthwhile experiment. Thank you for your time."
I now introduce Board Member Frank Skipper.
Ms. Solis, may I ask you how many more presenters you're going to have from your
Good evening, Board, and I'm Frank Skipper from Frank Skipper Construction Company, a local contractor. I'm not very elegant like some of the other people, but I'll tell you what real life is all about. I graduated from Santa Barbara High School in 1957 only because there was a machine shop teacher named Marvin Melvin who kept me on the straight path. I was not near as fortunate as the doctor, that somebody sent me to higher education. I'd have flunked out of school if it hadn't have been for shop and the swimming team. I'm a Mensa member. That's how you turn kids off, by not giving them a place to go to school. I currently serve as Chair of the California Construction Education Research Foundation for the Associated General Contractors California. I served on Jack O'Connell's CTE Committee. I am serving on Jack O'Connell's CT Method Committees, and I serve on Sunny McPeak's, Secretary Sunny McPeak Apprenticeship Committee. I know about vocational training. I'm a successful contractor that's desperate for construction workers that have reasonable skills and can work. In addition to all those other things, I'm on Partners in Education. I understand education, and I'm the treasurer of Trade Art and now a Board Member of the American Charter School. We are so desperate for people that have some education. The University of California set the curriculum of the California High School, yet only 10% of our students go to University of California. You are disenfranchising 90% of the students by not giving them an alternate way to go to school. Thirty percent of the jobs in California don't require a college education. Only 20% do, yet everybody wants to send everybody to college. When are we going to learn? When are we going to serve our kids? It's up to you to take this opportunity to do something that will do something for all those disenfranchised kids.
Good evening, Board Members and Dr. Sarvis. My name is Ray Franco. I'm an architect and former Board Member some years ago. But, please forgive me, but hace muchos años, hace doce años que estuve en la iglesia de Nuestra Señora Guadalupe, con quinientas personas aquí, padres y hijos, preguntándonos que por qué no íbamos a tener este programa? Por qué no teníamos un programa que iba a enseñar a los niños cómo trabajar? Darles más que estos ambiciosos sueños de que todos podían ir a la universidad. Verdaderamente lo que querían una buena educación para poder tener un trabajo después de graduarse del high school. Basically, I'm telling you that more than 12 years ago, I met with 500 people, and I think Ms. Cordero may have been at that meeting at Our Lady of Guadalupe, where those 500 people were begging for us to have a program like this, a program that would provide the kind of education that would basically forego some of the dreams that we put on a lot of these kids, that everybody's going to be a PhD, everybody's going to go to the University of California, that there was really no bridge for them. They really saw no future beyond high school, and they saw no relevancy in high school. We were there, and I signed that pact. I signed the pact to create this kind of a school or this kind of a program. As you saw what Dr. Noel showed you earlier in the slide, we've had nothing but a decline in those programs. So the one thing that I want to bring out at this point is, this is not Dr. Noel's school. Dr. Noel certainly had an idea, but not his only idea. Many of us have been working with Dr. Noel for months and trying to advise and trying to bring this about. It just so happens that Dr. Noel has a lot of time, and as he said, "I'm a 77-year-old PhD. I'm not going to be the one who runs this school." I say that because it's almost become, and I see it, a personal issue, and I see some of the antagonism going on in the Board and with Dr. Sarvis. And Dr. Sarvis, please forgive me, okay? But in the 25 years that I've been watching or serving on the Board of Education, I've never seen a superintendent address a Board Member by gee-bob. So please remember that this is not about Dr. Noel, okay? This is about a separate proposal here. Secondly, I've heard a lot of comments regarding whether or not this is a financial burden, and you yourself, Dr. Sarvis, said that some of the charter schools are financial parasites. I beg to differ. I've worked on 10 different charter schools. I am currently building six charter schools, all of which ultimately have a higher, higher, okay, funding than what we do in the public school. And that's precisely why it is very, very important to do this as a charter school. And I say that because there are numerous grants that are available there, through the Rhodes Foundation, through the Gates Foundation, that basically raise the funding that's available for these schools and for these programs. So I beg to differ, they are not financial parasites. Basically, I'd like to address to the Board to their own mission statement, the mission statement that's been there for years. It says, "The Santa Barbara School Districts, in partnership with parents and the community." In all these years, I've never seen the kind of support for any single issue, whether it be at the city council or whether it be before the school board, that had the kind of support, the kind of support that you see not only in this room, but the people who signed on to these petitions, the people who begged us, the 500 people at Our Lady of Guadalupe, to form this kind of a charter. So I take it somewhat offensively when somebody says that you may deny this by the basis that you don't believe in these people. You don't believe in the people who are here? You don't believe in the commitment of the people who are here? Mr. Zatell, I don't know where you stood on that. On the one hand, you're telling us that the state is telling us that we need this, but on the other hand, you're saying, you know, that's one of the bases by which this Board can deny the charter. Let me go on with the rest of the mission statement. The mission statement says, "The parents in the community will provide professional instruction and guidance so that the students will achieve academic excellence." Does our program not say that every student will take the UC entrance requirements? They will understand and respect diversity. Isn't that what we're all about? Look at who's here. I'm an immigrant. I'm one of those lost souls who came to this country, okay, but who was given the opportunity by a high school teacher who said, "You can become an architect." And despite the fact that there was no money, the fact that I couldn't do that, there was still the opportunity for me to join the Marine Corps, serve my country, and then come back and use the GI Bill to do what my teacher in high school told me that I could do. Understand the balance of individual interests and civic responsibilities. Isn't that what this is all about? Are we not teaching? Are we not proposing here a program about public safety? How can anybody say that because there's only 13 jobs as firefighters in Santa Barbara County, that this is a basis for denial? Is that not a basis for all of the other programs, then, that you're proposing? The reality is that if you've been here long enough, you'll find out that we raise the kids here, we educate the kids here, they move away, and then finally, they come home. Okay? I have seven teachers in my family, including two who are my children. They were taught by these schools over here in Santa Barbara. I mentioned that at the last meeting. It also says that you'll participate in an increasingly technological society. Isn't that what we're talking about here? Are we not talking about educating kids and letting them know that it's more than just what you throw on the wall and see what sticks? That there is technology that is required in any of these jobs, whether it be as a fireman, whether it be as a policeman, whether it be as a carpenter? You cannot do any of these jobs without knowing computer science, without knowing mathematics. What we're talking about is the application of those basic courses that, as was stated earlier, are very, very dry. Can you not teach English and ask a student to read Walden? And what do you learn from Walden? That you too can build your own cabin, you can count the nails, you can count the boards, you can do the estimating, and you can keep that accounting. That's the relevancy that we're talking about. And finally, it's to take responsibility for their own learning and development. That's what charter schools are about. It says that they're schools of choice. When somebody goes and says, "I want to be part of that school," thereby, you take that responsibility. You take the responsibility to your own education. It's not your responsibility, it's the student and the parent. That's the foundation and the basis for charter schools. Finally, I'd like to direct you to your own Board policy, the policy that says the districts acknowledge the intent of the legislature, that charter schools are and should become an integral part of the California educational system, and that the establishment of charter schools should be encouraged. That's what we're looking for. We're looking for a partnership. We're looking for you and Mr. Zatell to work with us, to build a school, to review the curriculum. There are numerous programs where there are partnerships. When we first founded Peabody Charter here, before any of you were on the Board, before any of you even thought about a charter, we did a partnership with Peabody until they got their full independence, and then they were able to raise their own monies additionally to build buildings that the Santa Barbara School District owns now. But it's part of that charter, it's part of that partnership. That's what we're asking for. We're asking for that kind of help. It says that the governing board believes that the charter schools provide one opportunity to implement school-level reform and to support innovations which improve student learning. If you really believe it, if you really believe your own Board policy, you will work with us and approve this charter. Finally, the Educational Code, Section 47605, "In reviewing petitions for the establishment of charters pursuant to this section, the chartering authorities shall be guided by the intent of the legislature. The charter schools are and should become an integral part of the California educational system, and that establishment of charter schools should be encouraged." Okay? That means that we don't talk about charter schools as they were financial parasites. I'm sorry, but that's how much I believe in the educational system, and that's how much I believe in public education. It was very, basically, Thomas Jefferson who set up this system of public education that we have in this country. Okay? And what are we doing? He was talking about independence. He wasn't talking about trying to put people down. Finally, in the California Ed Code, again, it is the intent of the legislature in enacting this part to provide opportunities for teachers, parents, pupils, and community members to establish and maintain schools that operate independently from the existing school district structure as a method to accomplish the following, and it lists a whole bunch of other things there. And so what I'm saying is, that's what the legislature wants, that's what your own Board policy is, and I beg you to approve this charter. Thank you very much.
Madam President, I told you that we only had two more speakers. My co-chair has asked for 30 seconds of your time.
I'm really, go ahead. You won't be heard, otherwise, I'm afraid.
The point is, is that you're not a man anybody wants to follow, and you really made the points that I was going to make, certainly about whether these kids are going to find work in Santa Barbara. I don't know what kind of job any young man's going to have to get or any young woman to be able to afford Santa Barbara prices when they first start out. And the other thing is, and Brian, I'm going to address this to you, I've never heard you say that charter schools are financial parasites. I don't know where it came from. As far as I know, it came from none of us, and these are things, things that are printed in the paper we can't be responsible for. If the editorials say that the state, that the school board is hostile to charter schools, that's not our, those aren't our words. And so I ask you not to hold us responsible for it, and that any of you would have anger about those things because we didn't say them. And I thank you for listening to me.
At the March 20 hearing, we delivered to you over 300 petition signatures, which we obtained in a span of just four days. Today, I proudly announce that we have received pledges in the amount of $120,000 in just one week. These pledges will help American Charter High School to mitigate and impact, mitigate any impact it may have on district finances. This completes our presentation. Because time is of the essence, we are grateful to the Board for putting our charter petition on the action agenda for a vote at this meeting. We are convinced that American Charter High School will meet a pressing community need for alternative programs, programs that hold the promise of engaging young people in school and reducing the kind of alienation that causes low achievement and disruptive, even destructive, behavior. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen of the Board.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. We have a number of public speakers, 23 to be exact, I believe, and I don't want to lose the public speakers, but I would like to take a very brief break. Can I have a show of hands of public speakers who may not stay, in which case, we'll take your comments now out of order? You know, I don't know any other way to handle it, but I do really feel like the Board needs a quick break right now. Everybody will hang in here with us. Thank you. We'll take just a five-minute break. I believe we have 23, and I, given the great interest in this topic, I will give everyone their full three minutes. If people are repeat speakers, I would ask you to keep your comments very brief, and we'll announce several names in a row so that people can line up and we can take speakers very quickly, and we will begin with...
Kenneth Locke, who's way back there.
And then read a couple more names.
Kathy Abney.
Kathy Abney. I can do that. Roseanne Crawford. Laura Wilson.
The question I have is, relates to integrity. How much integrity does this community have? I relate that to an integrated education, in relation to intelligence. I see this program as a compromise in relation to all the above. I think first and foremost is that the kids achieve integrity. They achieve intelligence. This program does not provide that. I'm sorry to say that I don't think that the whole school, your whole school system does not provide that. I'm not isolating this one charter school. The members who are backing this, how much integrity do they have? How do they promote the integrity of the community? I'm sorry to say that my communication with this community, the leadership of this community has been ignored, and the reason for that is because of a lack of integrity. My specialty is in relation to the arts, the fine arts, the philosophy of aesthetics, athletics. This community at large is relatively unenlightened. It's living in a dark age. Leadership? Where is this community going? Where are these children going? This is like a chain letter going here. This is inflation. We have to look at the season that we're in here. I see this as a blatant disregard here. I can't even believe what I'm actually seeing. I don't know what's motivating people to this whole process. It's just beyond me. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Principal Kathy Abney.
Good evening. I'm here to share with you what currently exists within the district and the possibilities and educational options that are potentially available. Our district currently has a small high school with alternative programs designed to meet the needs of the disenfranchised student. Thanks to district support, strong district support, we have highly qualified and enthusiastic teachers able to deliver core instruction. We have focused our energies this year on revising our vision and our mission to more accurately reflect our commitment to provide an equitable and meaningful education that meets the needs of our very unique student population. Through dual enrollment courses at Santa Barbara City College, ROP courses, and the use of current district staff trained in specific academic and vocational areas, we envision becoming an Educational Options campus, offering small academy-style learning communities. This will allow us to focus on the needs of our district's diverse student population while at the same time closing the achievement gap through hands-on, interactive, experiential coursework to engage the interests and talents of all learners. Possible small learning communities include a culinary arts academy, an early childhood education academy, a public safety and law enforcement academy, construction academy, horticulture academy. We currently have a strong working relationship with City College through our middle college program. The college continues to be interested in growing that program exponentially. ROP has agreed to work with us to create skills-based classes that will complement and enrich courses that are available to students at City College. And our focus is, and should be, on the C and D students, those students with the greatest potential for dropping out of school. They are the ones who need to be challenged to believe in themselves. They are the ones who will most benefit from the opportunities that Educational Options can and will provide. They are also the students who are in the bottom deciles and the ones who need to be supported if we are to close the achievement gap. This is where we should be putting our energy and our resources. All we are lacking is a facility. Everything else is in place. The spirit and the passion are there, the teachers are here and ready to teach. The students are in our classrooms, eager and looking for that connection that will make school meaningful and valuable. Thank you.
Ms. Abney, Ms. Abney, excuse me. Maybe you can tell the audience that you're the principal...
I'm the principal of La Cuesta, the continuation high school.
Sorry. Baba...
Thank you.
I think he left. Is that correct? Roseanne Crawford. Is Roseanne here? Followed by Laura Wilson.
Dr. Noel, I would sincerely like to acknowledge all of your hard work on this proposal and your value on this board. I'm sure a lot of people noticed the paid political advertisement in Sunday's newspaper. Quite impressive, a full page with all the elected officials, others in the community as a whole whom the community respects, supporting this proposed charter school. Let's put this paid political announcement, and well-done political announcement aside, and really look at what's on the table here. I feel that we really need to put students before politics. Hold the tomatoes, please. I feel the approval of this proposed charter school is divisive and will weaken the other programs and academies that are currently offered at our elementary schools. We already have programs at our secondary schools that cultivate the culture of a small learning environment. We have a very generous, open, intradistrict, district transfer policy that encourages joy. At Santa Barbara High School, they have their academies such as VADA, MAD, the new public policy, the Apple Academy and such. They have auto shop classes. They have a new PE leadership class that is encouraging conflict mediation skills and basically based off of developing these things and instilling these attributes in people that are looking for this kind of direction. At San Marcos, they have a great pre-nursing program that feeds directly to Santa Barbara City College. At Dos Pueblos, there's a construction academy that offers courses in trades, drafting, site survey. There's an engineering academy on that campus that teaches physics, engineering classes, robotics, mostly self-sustaining from corporate sponsors, okay? And of course, their international baccalaureate program. We have, we have so many opportunities already available to our children in the secondary schools. If the community wants a safety class, it could be incorporated at one of our existing campuses. I encourage you to work with and strengthen what we have. This will ultimately protect our students' best interests. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Laura Wilson.
Ladies and gentlemen, could, Ms. Malikov, could I ask you to read several names, and could we actually line up? Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Dos Williams, Lane Wheeler, John Rutherford.
Laura Wilson, and I'm speaking for myself. The American Charter School request is several good ideas cobbled together to meet perceived needs in a politically correct but educationally unsound manner. First, it is the job of school board members to oversee and implement programs that serve the greatest number of their students well. It is unfortunate that one school board member has spent such considerable effort to advocate for the few what he should have been securing for the many. This is not personal, it's simply the fact that this board, district, and in fact, the state, have allowed various programs to lapse over time, including ROTC. This district cut the seven-period day at the junior highs, and now, now you're faced with a politically expedient plan that does not serve the educational needs of the secondary schools very well. Second, the liberal arts aspect of this is aimed to help the B students, and I just wonder, has everybody simply lost their minds? Creating a school for a grading scale is bizarre and absolutely demeaning to all students. A B is a good, solid, well-earned grade. And these students are perfectly able to go to a CSU campus with a B, with B grades. I mean, I don't see the need. They are getting stuff at the other schools they'll never get. They'll, the dance, the theater, the art, the sports, the teams, the cheerleading, those are the things, those B students thrive in those situations. I know. I've spent a week interviewing them for scholarships at Santa Barbara High School, and they're amazing. They are taking advantage when, you know, making the connections and taking advantage. The public safety and emergency preparedness is a response to this district's own elimination of ROTC. And why did this district instigate its closure? The answer to gang problems in neighborhoods is leadership classes in each of the existing junior high and high schools. You know, the schools in the neighborhoods where the kids who need the leadership skills live. The schools are there, the kids are there. That's where the emphasis needs to be. And it is wonderful that the city council is so supportive. But where were they when year after year, the after-school programs were cut? When the summer sports leagues at each elementary and junior high campus were reduced? If you want to impact leadership and gang problems, lobby your city council to fund after-school programs at all neighborhood schools. This will positively impact all students and your community. And I would like to close by saying that I, as a member of the public and somebody who's been involved with the board, I really do believe Bob Noel should recuse himself from this vote.
Thank you. Dos Williams, followed by Lane Wheeler. Lane, sorry, Lane Wheeler.
Well, I'll tell you what this city council member was doing when we've had cuts, and I worked for two speakers of the Assembly to try to work to increase education funding, and of course, was opposed to the vehicle license fee cut, which has been one of the things that hurt us so badly. So I, I mean, I, I think that what's sad about this is that we, it's become a little bit divisive. But when you have a good idea that has some problems with it, that's the time for negotiation and massaging that proposal, not the idea, not the time for it to be dismissed summarily. And so I hope that, that you choose the middle ground here tonight, which is to accept it and move forward with preparing whatever MOU and whatever conditions that you need to do to feel comfortable to approve it. I, I think the school district has done some good things on its academies. I don't think the loss in vocational training is a function of will, it's a function of money. And, and that means we have to get very creative for ways to augment what the school district gets for these vocational trainings. That's exactly what Dr. Noel has tried to do, and I, I think we should support that effort. I can conclusively tell you that it is not true that there is not a demonstrated demand for these kinds of jobs. Mr. Zatell is correct that there is not a demand in the fire area. We get tons of applicants to our positions in fire. However, we're hiring so many police officers right now that they're starting to look younger than me. And, you know, so we have a lot of opportunity out there for that, and we are also a city where there's 800 units in the planning process. Now, I hope more of those end up being affordable than is the case right now, but that means there's lots of jobs out there for people in construction and in public safety. So, you know, I, I just hope that, that we do not just see past what we see as some issues that need to be worked out in this proposal. We have to get very creative in order to deal with the fact that a bachelor's just doesn't get you a whole lot. A bachelor's in liberal arts these days just doesn't get you very far. You need to get a master's or a PhD, and a lot of folks just don't do that. They don't have the money, they don't have the time, they don't have the will to do that, and frankly, a career in public safety or in construction is going to make a whole lot more than a city council member or somebody with liberal arts education.
Thank you. Lane Wheeler, followed by John Rutherford.
Well, now, I'm not going to go into city politics, I know that much for sure. I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a long-term educator in this district, approaching 30 years. I am a parent of five children who have successfully, just like Mr. Franco, completed educations. Well, three of them have completed their education through the Santa Barbara School District, and they've been richly afforded with many, many opportunities and the classes that they needed and wanted, and have been included in all the school functions that are out there and available in the general high school populations. I'd like to put on two hats. First, being a teacher, I'd like to know where the students for this academy are going to be derived. I'm wondering if they're going to be from other school districts in our area, or if they're going to be taken out of our general population. Of course, anytime we lose kids, our ADA declines, which is a draw on the general fund, and I'm not here to talk about money, because I think there's enough other problems with this proposal that we need to discuss. I'd like to know where the teachers are going to be coming from also. The proposal suggests that highly qualified teachers will teach this program, and being a teacher of, like I say, 30 years, I know the stresses and requirements that are put upon teachers today. Yet, the proposal also suggests it's going to be taking new teachers from the UCSB Teacher Credential Program and putting them in this program, and that just seems like a dichotomy that won't work. And I would like to bring that to question and have an answer given to that, that part of the proposal. You know, I have a number of friends who have graduated from school and gone on to college and have looked for jobs in the fire services, and as Dos Williams said, they all require a bachelor's degree before they're even considered, and I would throw that out there for our folks to consider when they're thinking about how successful these job placements will be. I'm also wondering why we need another program that's all going to be doing many of the same functions that we have. We've heard Mrs. Abney speak about the facilities they have and the programs they have. We see them in the different programs. My own son, who's on a 504, graduated with honors from the Health Academy at San Marcos High School, and has now been accepted to San Diego State after two years of successful education at City College. So I see these programs that we have in place, and I know they work because my own kids have gone through them and have succeeded with them. I'm hearing how wonderful this program is, and yet, I'm wondering why the Santa Barbara Teachers Association was never consulted on this. We are the excellent teachers that bring the education to our students, and I'm just wondering why they haven't consulted the teachers to find out how they feel about the proposal. This is a novel idea, like many of the programs we have right now in our schools and are succeeding. I think this one is good, and I think it's time we honor people who decide to go in professions that are, don't require a bachelor's or a PhD. I would like you to consider deeply the cost and effect on our district, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Rutherford, followed by John Campilio.
John Rutherford left. Okay, John Campilio then, followed by...
Sergeant Merlin Kelly.
John Campilio, Sergeant Kelly, Linda Mitchell, oh, okay.
Followed by Linda Mitchell.
My name's Merlin Kelly, and I thank you for the time to speak before you. I'm in favor of the Charter High School. When I was a youngster, I knew what I wanted to be. I wanted to be a cop. That's an advantage that a lot of kids don't have, even up to today. On January 1, 1963, I became a cop, and 36 years later, I retired, only to return four more years for some volunteer work. But during the time I was a police officer, it's always a learning experience. A police officer doesn't do what the public thinks they do. That's only what you see. What a police officer is required to do is a very diverse type of activity. If I listen to Mr. Zatell's report correctly, the state isn't even considering law enforcement or emergency responders as a career in their programs, in the high school. Charter High School is. One of my jobs periodically as a police officer... One of my jobs periodically as a police officer was doing oral boards. I was amazed how many people came to an oral board totally unprepared. One of the first questions they're asked is, "Do you know anything about the city of Santa Barbara? Do you know anything about the police department?" "Yeah, it's a nice place to live. You're good." I talked to a couple of guys, and have no idea what the cost of living is, what the houses are. This academy that's being proposed would go a long way, starting high school students on what that career is like. When I started, there wasn't any, any education program that I could go to to become a police officer. Yes, City College now has an education program, but I'm still amazed how many people do not take advantage of that because they're not aware of it, and later on, when they want to be a police officer, you know, it's an afterthought. Education? Yeah, you know, okay. But once you become a police officer, boy, are you interested in education because it goes far in what your job is. But do you want to do without emergency responders? I think not. Society would quickly degrade without them. So I'm very surprised that the state of California and the federal government is not considering that as a viable career to teach high school students. We're sorely lacking in applicants.
Thirty seconds.
For police departments. Yes, hundreds of people apply for the position, but I'm talking about qualified applicants. The city of Santa Barbara, the Sheriff's Department, some of the, the fire departments have never been fully staffed for quite a few years. And with the turnover, they probably won't be. It's getting harder and harder to find qualified people to come here that aren't willing to drive two or three hours to work. The American Charter High School will 110% follow your mission statement. They're a viable alternative to what's going on. They're not going to water down what, what is being done. They'll only add to what is being done.
Thank you.
And thank you for considering that.
Linda Mitchell, followed by Tom Riddenhour.
I'm Linda Mitchell. I'm the president of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I represent over 1,000 certificated highly qualified teachers in the Santa Barbara School District, and we have many concerns about this charter school proposal, seeking your approval tonight. First of all, the charter high school would take away students from our already cash-strapped district that is losing students yearly. Over 60 teachers have received layoff notices this year, directly related to the declining enrollment in our school district. A big concern we have is why was not the Santa Barbara Teachers Association contacted for any kind of approval or disapproval? Why is the union being left out? The charter committee says they have over 300 signatures, but never approached the union. You, as a school board, have had little time to even study their issues with such a tight timeline. Where is the proof that this two-track school with its college prep and public safety track will keep the students in this community? Where are they going to get the teachers? Teachers need to be in a union. Their rights need to be protected, and yet the union was not contacted in this regard. Where is this charter school going to be located? Too many concerns, too many questions. The Santa Barbara Teachers Association strongly urges you not to support approving this charter school tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Riddenhour, followed by Barbara Holt.
I'm Tom Riddenhour. I graduated from Wilson School, La Cumbre, and Santa Barbara High School. There were three of us here tonight around the same time of class in the 50s. I've been in education all my life. I have no credentials. I worked at Camp Lower, starting in junior high school. I learned what we call in the Army OJT. I also learned, as my children grew up, that they were my best teachers. When I saw my children, other children, when you start seeing them lose the spark in their eyes as they continue on in their education, or they keep that spark, there's something going on, right or wrong there. A.S. Neal, an Englishman, started the free school system. His purpose was to say that education is to learn about jobs, excuse me, is to create an individual that can do a job that isn't even created yet. So this concern about the jobs in the community, it doesn't matter. You want to grow up healthy individuals. You have to start in kindergarten. To say it's going to fix everything in high school, it's almost too late. What's great about what's happening now is that the dialogue is out there. People are talking about it. They're seeing where somebody had taken a Model A apart in junior high school and put it back together. What happened to those Model As? What happened to the machine shop equipment at the high school? People forget what's happening. What is it is? Our hands, through our heart, through our mind, is how we learn, through music, theater. I volunteered for five years, and for one semester, I was paid at Santa Barbara High School to work in the theater program. It's a disaster. There's no full-time tech teacher there. As you can see, there's occupational hazards. There's nobody teaching that in that high school program. They don't even see a movie on how to work a table saw, but they're given these tools unsupervised to create a production that everybody at the end, they go, "Whoa, that was great. What a wonderful experience." They don't see what's going on, on a daily basis by the sixth-period class, that people, the counselors set them in there because they don't know where else to put them. Sure, there's a few people there who are interested in theater. The rest of them are sitting in their chairs, one step better than detention. And when I was there, I started saying, "Okay, listen, let's do something." They learned about a tape mager, how to move a ladder, a chalk line, the basic construction techniques that overlap in construction and theater. At the same time, these kids got a sense of ownership.
Thank you.
In what they were doing. So it's, let's look at the broader picture. All these details confuse.
Barbara Holt, followed by Andrew Leinberger.
My name is Barbara Holt. I am a parent of three children who've gone through the Santa Barbara schools and six grandchildren. I believe that the American Charter High School is an idea that should have taken off many years ago. I support it strongly. I believe that it's a competition that is healthy and the choice that is healthy. All of you here today on the board, you participated in the American process that included competition and choice, and that's why you're sitting here today. I would encourage you to embrace this competition and this choice, not run from it. Don't be afraid of the financial competition. It's healthy. I encourage it, and I encourage you to vote for this much-needed program. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Leinberger, is Andrew, yes, followed by Lynn Rodriguez.
Hi. My name's Andy Leinberger. I'm a local contractor. I've been in, been working in construction since 1967. What I've seen happening in construction is just, it's just, is horrible, is a gradual decline of the, of skilled labor. When I started in construction, there was a pretty good apprenticeship program where kids out of high school could go, pick, pick a trade, get a job, and work, and work their way up, work their way up in a company. Now, if you've got a kid in high school and he wants to go to work in construction, he has to, he has to compete against hordes of people who are working for peanuts, can't speak English. There are no, there are very few entry-level jobs in construction because those spaces are all filled with hordes of laborers. They put three or four laborers on each job where one person with tech skills could do the job. They're not, it's very, it's a very hostile attitude for a kid out of high school to go to work in construction because that's everybody around him in the entry level. Very few speak English. They don't like these boys coming in and taking their jobs. They consider that their territory. So if you have a kid that wants to work in construction, if he doesn't have a good connection with somebody, he's out of luck. If they have skills, if they, if they could go to this tech school and get these hours and hours and hours of tech skills and have that under their belt, when they get to the job, they'll get a job, and they'll be paid much better than these laborers that are working for peanuts. You get a kid out of high school, he's going to have to work for the same rate, the same rate as these guys are working for nothing, and they're not going to last long, and they're going to be gone doing something else. And you've got this gang problem in Santa Barbara and the drug problems in the high school. This drug problem is being kind of kept under the rug and quiet, but it's getting really bad. And these, and all these gang kids, I mean, you know, it's horrible. It's just more and more all the time. Whole lot of these, these kids in these gangs, if they had learned some of these tech skills, they could be getting jobs instead of dealing drugs or whatever, whatever they're going to be. What are they going to be doing for a living when they get out of high school, these bunch of punks? They don't have a chance, but they're still going to be here. So if you don't open, get the school going. It is very badly needed. There's a huge shortage of skilled labor on entry, at entry level. They're just not there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Rodriguez, followed by Jan Campbell.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Sarvis, other staff members. My name is Lynn Rodriguez, and I'm a parent of two children in the district, a high schooler and a elementary school student, and I'm a former member of this board. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening on this very important issue. I know it's taken a lot of time and it's generated a lot of community interest, and that's always a good thing. There appears to be a growing level of support in the community for this proposed charter, I think partly due to recent events in the community and for some of the trends that have been discussed earlier. While the elements of the proposed charter high school are laudable, and there's been a tremendous amount of work that's gone into the development of the proposal, I believe that current charter petition is not the answer, and I urge you not to approve it tonight. We have three comprehensive high schools in this district serving the diverse needs of our students. Administrators and teachers at these schools face complex challenges, closing the achievement gap, offering a variety of programs that meet diverse needs, addressing the spectrum of academic requirements that will prepare students for university, community college, or the workforce, and meeting increasing challenges with dwindling resources. The district already provides smaller learning communities and environments at each high school through the six existing academies and through focus programs for at-risk students, and also, as Ms. Abney pointed out earlier, through La Cuesta Middle College Dual Enrollment and other programs. I believe that this charter petition provided to the board is incomplete and was planned hastily in order to receive grant funds and should have been put together over a longer period of time with broader community input and more involvement from the board and the staff. I was still on this board when the proposal was first presented, fully 10 months or so after the charter application was submitted to the CDE by, by Dr. Noel and others. This does not represent comprehensive collaborative community-based planning, which is vital, is vital to the success of any such program. There's many merits to the program. I think it needs a lot more time if it's going to be successful. Creating a charter high school is substantially more challenging than an elementary charter and requires a much higher level of planning, more facilities, and more administrative support, and therefore requires more time and more careful consideration. I understand that some members of the public feel this proposed charter will fill a particular unmeed net, unneed, unmet need right now, based on recent community events. I believe those needs can be met through creation of additional academies or enhanced programs, perhaps structured in similar ways to one or more of the American Charter program elements. This board has a responsibility to assure that any charter school petition adheres to the ed code, but more importantly, has a responsibility to protect and serve the needs of all students in this district, not only those attending our other high schools and programs in the district, but also the ones attending this high school. It's vitally important to make sure their needs are met through this program. I believe that the current proposal will come at the expense of other school programs and may in fact not meet the needs of those students that it's, that's attempting to meet. I urge you to deny the current charter proposal and work with its vendors to improve upon existing programs or take the time to create an improved charter proposal.
Thank you. Jan Campbell, followed by Beto Casio.
Good evening, Madam President and School Board members and Superintendent Sarvis. My name is Jan Campbell, and I'm the parent of two children in the Santa Barbara Secondary District. I have served on the site council for La Colina Junior High School for three years, and I'm the current president of the San Marcos Athletic Boosters. I want to state my opposition to the current proposal in front of the board for the establishment of the American Charter High School. I have read both the original and modified proposals, as well as the current staff report. There are a number of reasons why I am opposed to this particular proposal. In the interest of time, I will elaborate only on two. In general, I believe that ACHS plan as presented is full of inconsistencies and inefficiencies. The plan seems hastily thrown together and not fleshed out in terms of facilities, teaching, and staff resources, and most importantly, student curriculum. The three distinct academies proposed in the plan are scheduled to begin serving students this coming September. That's four months from now, at a place yet to be determined, staffed by teachers yet to be hired. I can't speak to the details of the two technical academies. However, I don't understand why, if parents and students are demanding this type of curriculum, why they could not be integrated into existing high school campuses, such as the very successful MAD program and VADA program at San, Santa Barbara High School and the Health Academy at San Marcos High School. However, I have to say that I was particularly stunned at the desire to create a liberal arts program for B students. This part of the petition was filled with inconsistencies and frankly, misrepresentations. The petition states that students in the liberal arts program will beef up their resume with advanced placement classes. How can they do this when they are not offering advanced placement classes? How will these students do the required AP work, review for the tests, et cetera? The petition only mentions pre-AP classes. The existing high schools already offer this type of curriculum. Additionally, they say that their students will be prepared for the UC and state, UC and state systems. They won't be, according to the presented curriculum, which does not meet the UC requirements, the UC A to G requirements. English is required for four years, not recommended, as stated in the petition. The ACHS liberal arts program calls for two years of lab science. Most UC-bound students take three or four years of lab science. Where are they going to get the labs to do this?
Thirty seconds.
Finally, I understand that, that by law, the school board cannot approve or deny a petition based on finance, on its financial impact to the district. However, as a parent, I can certainly urge you to think back on the last few years and remember the painful budget cuts those of us with secondary students had to endure, elimination of seventh-period for the junior highs, elimination of most or all of the funding for athletics and other co-curricular activities, class size increases, and so on. Creating a school whose proposal is to take 500 students from a district with declining enrollment could be potentially devastating to the district. I urge you not to vote for this petition.
Thank you. Bello Casio, did I say that right? Beto, Beto Casio. No, not here. Jack Harris, followed by maybe Sharon Chessman? Is Sharon here? Sharon Chessman? No. Followed by Steven Yates, Steve Yates.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Jack Harris. I appeared here before, as you probably remember, in support of the junior ROTC, and I came here tonight to primarily to affirm my support for the public safety and emergency preparedness part of the proposal, which I still support. But as I sat here and listened to the presentations by everyone tonight, I came away with a, a different feel for this whole program. I support it totally. It's a tremendous opportunity, a tremendous opportunity, particularly, I believe, in the construction and technical section. There's two premier technical schools in the country, in the marine area, for example. One is over at City College, which is their marine technology group, which is far and away the best in the country. The other one's on the East Coast, and it's called the International Yacht Restoration School, and they have an international group who come in from all over the world. They're expanding like mad. They're, they're expanding their curriculum from just fixing wooden boats to electronics. They're expanding their curriculum from just fixing wooden boats to electronics, engines, drive, systems on boats, the whole thing that has to do to keep a boat in good order. And we have 1,000 boats in the harbor and it's kind of a catch-as-catch can as far as who's going to work on them. I believe, and I bring up this point because we talked earlier about the fact and had some information about the lack of opportunity for various skills and routes for people to take for work, and this one was not covered, of course. It's a small thing, but the opportunity is there. This is a great opportunity for the board to propose, to approve, a great idea, and I hope you will do that. Thank you.
Steve Yates, followed by Deb Pentland.
Good evening. My name is Steve Yates. I'm actually here representing my two daughters. I have a 13 and 11-year-old, one of them in a charter school and one of them at Santa Barbara Junior High School. And if I were to let them stay up this late, they would be here, listening to a group of adults, leaders of the community, stewards, discussing how we can be engaged in committing to them a rewarding future and a future in which they can recommit to us. And it's interesting. I'm going to pose a rhetorical question. I had presented a prepared speech, we're going to put that aside and ask a question. Coincidentally, we heard the School Board talk about their program, and I can't remember the anachronism for it, but talking about addressing vocational opportunities for children through your class. And you have a charter school coming forward, identifying the same issue and addressing it the same way. It's wonderful, and my kids would have seen it, a roomful of people all looking at the same problems with potentially the same solution. So I wonder, what is the issue? Superintendent Jarvis told us tonight, at the beginning of these proceedings, that we couldn't make a judgment about the charter school based on funding. Yet every opponent of the charter school has come forward and cited their basis for objection to the charter school is attrition of the students through the existing system and the resultant financial consequences. So my question to you is, what is the issue between us? Because I know that you share the same commitment that proponents of the charter school share, that I share as a parent to my children. Why can't we have both? Why can't you do your job inside of your public school systems and address these vocational issues? And since there's not a financial consideration here, allow these wonderful parents and people to come forward with their charter school and compliment your efforts in this community to the benefit of my 13 and 11-year-old and all the children that are their peers and their future participants in this community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Deb Pentland, followed by Frank Skipper.
Thank you for allowing me to address you again tonight. I originally did not plan to, but as a school district nurse for 14 years, going in and out of the schools every day, I feel there is a critical need for this academy. And I see, every day I go to SSTs, IEPs. The academy at Santa Barbara High serves 150 children out of almost 2,000, over 2,000 students. The Santa Barbara Health Services Academy at San Marcos, Sue Dackenhouse just told me, she accepted 15 out of a high school of over 2,000. We are not meeting the needs of the children. And until we put the children first, the best interest of the child is the best interest of the district. The fact is, many of our academy at Santa Barbara High School that has to do with MAD has gate-level classes. So who is attending that? What happens to these children? I spent an hour with a young lady who has no direction and is pregnant yesterday for the third time. Okay, we are missing a lot of children. And every opportunity we have to create programs that give direction, I think the development of the alternative schools plan is fine, but it's a long way off, just like that curve showed. It took 12 years to lose the program. The fact is, when the state comes out with mandates, the actual delivery of a program to the T is not done for 10 to 12 years. I think it's wonderful that we have this much support in the community, and I don't think our kids can wait. The other issue is, many of the problems you brought up, Jan, we have those same problems in our programs now and in our schools. They're not going to be solved with one charter. It took six to eight months for the Santa Barbara Academy to have a lunch space. Okay? The reality is, is when we come up with a solid program and we see what our kids need, we need to go forth and build it. We have these issues in special ed all across the district. We have 504. We have to make it real for every program. We have to put our earnest best foot forward and be real about what the problems are and work towards the solutions for the kids and not our best interests. The union did not represent me tonight. So thank you.
I think that's the end of our public speakers. Is that correct? Okay. And I just want to remind board members that there is one item that we are going, we're approaching the 10:30 mark. We need to deal with the report on the draft second interim budget report tonight. So, okay, stay fresh. I actually will kick off the comments. And first, by sharing with you that I am the source of the P-word. I had directed a question to Dr. Noel early on in the process that I feared the parasitic nature of a charter school. This was before I had seen the actual charter. It was when I had seen the grant proposal. So I used the P-word. I said parasitic nature of charter programs, meaning the drain on administrative resources of chartering districts. So I'm the source of it, not Dr. Sarvis. I want to begin my comments by saying, this is a very ambitious proposal. And in some ways, I think it's too ambitious, and I've said that before. I think that's a compliment as well as a criticism, but I would much rather see this proposal come back as a single proposal, either a public safety school or vocational school. I'll get back to my, I'll get on to my comments about the liberal arts program. But I would much rather see a single school, a single academy, a single charter school. I think it serves too many masters. It requires very different kinds of facilities, curriculum, teacher specialties, supervision, individualized education plans. It's highly demanding. And I think it falls under that category of number two, that the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program in the petition. I have a great fear of that. And what often happens when there is a startup program and certain needs can't be met, alterations are made, changes are made, and then the program becomes something it was not intended to be because it started out with too ambitious a mission. We've seen petitions, prominent endorsers, speakers, these were all tactical activities to sell the school. I really don't feel like we had background substantive discussions about what would best serve the needs of the students of this district. It didn't take place. We saw a proposal for the first time in December, it was the draft of the grant proposal, and then we saw the petition, and we have been on a juggernaut. That is not how you plan a high school. It's not. Grant money aside, I don't think that that is a very successful timeline for planning such a complicated program. I actually, I'm not looking to embarrass anyone, but I called a number of elected officials who appeared in the ad, whose names appeared in the ad, as endorsers of the charter school because I wanted to hear from them. What was it that, you know, you were in favor of? What was it that got you excited? And what they said to me was that their, well, their responses were a bit more nuanced than mere support of the American Charter High School. They support career, technical, vocational education, whatever you want to call it, to meet the needs of students. And particularly against the backdrop of the loss of a young person's life in our community and whatever connections that tragedy may have had with a lack of engagement in school, they were supportive of methods to accomplish the goals of engaging students, but they really didn't care whether it was through the mechanism of a charter school or an academy or some other mechanism. That was made very clear to me by four different people. So, I mean, like I said, I'm not looking to embarrass anyone, but I think that their support was a little more nuanced. They support career technical education, as do I. I received some really unexpected feedback based on the liberal arts program. I got a call from a number of parents who were insulted by the B student proposal. Their students earn Bs. Their students work really hard for their Bs. And they felt that this greatly diminished their students' efforts, that somehow that they weren't worthy enough, that they needed to be in a program that would push them to get As. They found it extremely demoralizing. I actually had a conversation, a face-to-face conversation with a mother, and she is Latino, and I mention that only because she felt that the liberal arts proposal was perhaps designed to keep Latino students out of current gate and AP classes, so that they were reserved only for the white students and that there was an alternative program created for Latino students. I don't say I agree with these proposals, I am sharing it with you. This is feedback that was not given here tonight and was not heard up to this point. I'm convinced that points three, four, and five of what Mr. Zettel covered, the signatures, the affirmation of certain conditions, and the reasonably comprehensive descriptions of the other 16 elements, I'm certain that you can meet that. I just don't think that that's an enormous hurdle to overcome. As I said, I'm really concerned about number two, but I also have, which is the unlikeliness to successfully implement, but I have concerns about the unsound educational plan, which is number one. There's absolutely no description of the public safety academy, and that's probably the one portion of the proposal that I am certainly most drawn to investigating. There's no description of it. It's simply a wing and a prayer and a promise to implement in '08, '09. That's it, a promise. The timeline, as I indicated, is entirely inadequate for proper planning. The planning and implementation portions for the grant funding, I don't think are being used to their best advantage because of this very specific September 30 implementation deadline. And in fact, the grant, which has been, a number of people have mentioned, oh, but there's grant money, oh, but there's grant money, has no real impact on the school finance. The school is in a position with their projections that they may have to borrow money in a year's time. Now, they may get donations, but the donations may dry up. The donations may not meet the needs of the school. So I'm concerned about that aspect of it. In Santa Barbara, charters, startup charters, have attracted significant numbers of special ed students, students with special ed needs. But there's a very inadequate plan in place for special ed students, and the school may indeed attract a lot of students with special ed needs. I also have grave concerns about qualified staff members to meet the very broad demands of teaching the core classes and also very highly specialized electives. And I'm also deeply concerned that there's no counselor for the first couple of years of the school. We're talking about bringing into the school students who lack engagement in our regular programs. Don't they need support? You're talking about individual educational plans for each one of these students, and yet there's no counselor. A part-time administrator is supposed to take care of that aspect of it. I have a number of other questions that require very specific answers. One is the question already raised by Mr. Zettel. Are the comprehensive high schools to be used on some sort of contractual basis to provide core subject teaching? Are there spaces that you wish to have in core classes? I think we need to answer that question. If the board approves the charter, is the school prepared to provide a facility for '07, '08? I think that's a very critical question right now, given the timeline that we're on. Does the group have an administrator who's ready to immediately step into place, also given our timeline? Will the school start in September if they get an extension on the grant? Another question that I have. If not, should there be a condition that the school doesn't open in September of 2000 if you get an extension, but that the charter comes back for further, more detailed review? And finally, I would love to see a list of people who have committed to regularly teach or volunteer in the liberal arts and construction tech program that's going to start in September of 2007. I find it very difficult to believe that 5.8 FTEs are going to fulfill all the needs of the 75 students who are anticipated. I think that just about does it for my comments. I really have deep concerns about the likeliness of being able to implement the program set forth in the petition. Okay. Ms. Malikoff?
We don't, I'm sorry, Mrs. Guberts, we can't take questions from the floor like that. It would be nice to have that kind of give and take.
Does anyone else want to go first? I'm happy to jump in.
Go ahead, Ms. Parker.
I don't want to repeat much of what you said because I do agree with a lot of it and we've been here for a long time. On the charter petition review, just technically going through it, there's one point that I wanted to make, and that is, when it talks about the four FTEs, Mr. Price, what I see in the ed code is that it wants to talk about the number of teacher employees, not full-time equivalents. And the charter petitioners have estimated that they're going to have five employees. And I think that's why they gave us three signatures, because they knew that they needed at least 50% of five. Therefore, I would prefer to see on this, changes, every place where it says four FTEs, that that get changed to five PTEs. But that would also change their, the signature requirement from one more with a credential to two more with a credential. On page 78, just one other comment that I want to say is, I'm hearing the sense, this feeling that it's really for at-risk kids. And what I see in this petition is, it's something that's actually of somewhat limited value for at-risk kids because this petition expects students there to stay with a C average. And if you don't have a C average, you may not be invited back to the school. And in addition to that, if you even fail a class and the teacher doesn't think that you can be successful in that class, instead of continuing to work with that student, how do they put it here? The student shall be referred to another school. That's on page 30 of the petition. So I think the community wants to look at this as some sort of cure for our really at-risk students, but instead, this is more for students that are more motivated. I hope it would help some kids, but clearly, this charter is not meant for kids that are truly struggling. And I think that I will leave it there and let other board members chime in.
Ms. Cordell? Oh, okay, Ms. Malikoff.
Well, I came in kind of wavering at the beginning. I was not too sure whether I liked this or not. And then I was, I got this memo that has, I took it out, took out of it 41 points of things that were kind of questioning what was in the proposal and the petition. And I was hoping today to hear answers to those 41 points and feeling like, yeah, you know, this could work. I could see that, because they're addressing the issues. Instead, none of them were answered, and I'm taken aback. Instead, I heard people speak and say, this is a great program because it's for vocational, it'll be vocational help, and, oh, isn't that wonderful? Not everyone should go to college. And then you heard other people say, this is great because they'll let, they'll give people the opportunity to go to college. people the opportunity to go to college. Well, which is it? Is it both? If it is both, if it is both, how do you do that with five point, is it five point something?
Five point eight.
Five point eight people? How do you have people teaching physics? Because you have to have a different teacher teaching physics than biology, than math, than a different level. I never heard, I want to know, what levels of math are you teaching? That was one of the issues. I want to know, why, what about this 12th grade English? Isn't that going to be offered? What about science labs? How can you, how can you say you're going to meet the A and G requirements? Is that just through online? If it's just online, I don't think online works. I've seen it, they tried, they tried online at Dus Pueblo several years ago with a couple classes and found that high school students do not do that well. So, maybe it's coming into the other, if it's not online, tell me how you're going to educate all these, these kids. And then, there was a point that really hit me where someone said, it's 58, it's 75 kids is, what is it?
Sorry?
Two third, no, it's, what percentage? Does anyone remember what percentage of kids? I wrote this down somewhere. Coming out of Santa Barbara High School, Santa Barbara Junior High in La Cumbra, it's... Yes, it's out of here. I want, I want it, one-fifth, excuse me, one-fifth of eighth graders would enroll. I wanted to hear a response to that. But no, no one said a thing about it. Matter of fact, what was said in here is, "These conditions are not required to make the charter legally compliant." Well, isn't it, isn't it just courteous that you'd want to be able to answer some of the questions that are addressed to you? I don't understand. And I would sit here and say, "I'll come up with my questions, I got more." If you're dis-enrolling people, what does that mean? Do they, are they taking classes that could go back, the kids could go back to the junior, to the high schools if they want to? Can that happen? Or, I mean, I, you're yelling at me now, you want to answer these, why didn't you answer...
I would actually ask the audience to keep their comments to themselves.
I'm surprised, why didn't you answer these things before? Maybe what we need is more time, we need a continuance, and you need to be able to answer these questions. Because I can't vote on anything without knowing the answers to the questions that were posed, and I think that that would be the simplest thing to do. And maybe, I would feel okay about this if I knew the answers, because right now, I just can't imagine voting without knowing this. I could go on and on. I mean, it was mostly my, my, my issues were academic, were about academics, about AP classes, about PE requirements, about extra after-school activities. If you, you want to get to college, it's not just grades anymore, it's about extra activities. And what about kids who, who want to, I mean, they can't do sports, or art, or theater? You know, I'm not sure you're going to get 75 kids coming out of our schools who are not interested in those things, because they are, the majority of kids are interested in something in our comprehensive schools. I could go on, I don't know, I guess what I want is answers, and I just want details.
Is Ms. Cordero? Okay. Dr. Noell, do you have comments?
I'd assume I'll last, but it's okay, I'd be happy. Yeah, I think I'd rather go last. But I'll, I'll, never mind, no, I'll go now. Mrs. Malakoff, the report from Mr. Price was emailed to me on Friday afternoon, if I have that correct. And I take it that most of your questions came out of that. And the conversations that I have heard, and I want to emphasize again, I am a participant observer, this is the, this is the school board, of the charter, the charter school board. And the conversations were, well, how can we answer these, these questions in this short time, especially because many of them were legal? So, the effort was made immediately to get in touch with Mr. Mosher, the counsel for the American Charter School, who made a major effort to get back into San Diego where he's based, and produce an answer. And the answer is, in this memo, do I have that correctly? And the answer, and the answer says, in substance, that there is, there is no legal reason to deny this charter. Now, that's, there may be a disagreement between attorneys, that would not be nullified, but, but that, in a sense, says that many of the concerns that have been expressed by the board, and I've been listening now for, since you've been expressing them, do not constitute grounds for denial of a charter. Now, that's, and so then I read, and this is an attorney who read Mr. Zettel's report and Mr. Price's report. Now, I don't know how to adjudicate the differences between these people, they're, if Paul Minnie's involved, you're, you got, you got just about the best charter school lawyer in the state of California. About the next best one is Greg Mosher. And I'm basing that on my inquiries around the state, okay? And I would think that there's a basis for, for saying, okay, let's, let's let them sort that out. Because, and with that, no meaning to, anyway, bring you up short for raising points that may not be legal, but the public and the board need to know that. And, and we can't answer that question, we're not lawyers. So, one, one possibility, and I don't want to go much, much farther than that, because Mrs. Cordero had not had a chance to speak yet, I do have, I do, I would like to ask Mr. Price. My, my advice from counsel, Mr. Price, is that because I am not a member of any decision-making body for this school, and because I am no longer even the authorized agent for that grant, that I am free of any conflict of interest, and therefore can, can participate in the voting in this process. And I asked Dr. Sarvis today if he would give you a heads-up on that question, so that I wouldn't be blind signing you, and I trust that maybe you've given it some thought.
I have, and under applicable California law, you have no legal conflict that would preclude you from voting on this matter, based on the facts, as I understand them, being basically what you've said already tonight in terms of your role, and the fact that the petition identifies that you will be teaching a, a class as a pure volunteer, should the petition be approved and the school go forward.
Well, in that case, then, I do want to turn my yield to my colleague, Mrs. Cordero, but I would like to then have an opportunity to make a motion.
Ms. Cordero? Thank you. I think, as I was sitting, been sitting here and listening to this tonight, I keep coming back to this, to Dr. Sarvis's caveat at the beginning, that our, that the education codes specifically prohibits us from considering budgetary implications when we are considering whether or not to approve a charter. And I think there was probably good reason for that, so that educational decisions would be based on sound pedagogy and not necessarily driven by budgetary concerns or budgetary constraints. Given that, I feel really disappointed that the timing of this has, feels to me like I am being asked to make a hurried decision on a very complex charter for budgetary reasons. And I feel that we owe the same consideration to the few dozen students who would attend this school to consider their pedagogy as seriously as we give to the several thousand students who would not be attending this school, in terms of not letting budgetary concerns drive our pedagogy, pedagogical decisions. Given that, I share a number of the same concerns that other board members have raised about questions regarding the charter proposal itself. Dash Williams made a comment that when you have a good idea that has some problems, that's the time for negotiation. And I totally agree. I think, and I think the operative word there is "time." I was some, and I still am somewhat skeptical about the proposal, but I also have started to see some real merits in it. I'm very concerned about making sure that it does not become a dual-track system. There have been years and years, decades, of concerns about tracking. I don't want to see us make any, take any steps backward in that regard. Now, if there's a way to avoid that, that would be great, but I don't see it in this proposal yet. I think that the, one of the main claims that the proposal makes, and certainly what would be some of the best things about it if it were to work, is the intent to really involve students, to really engage students. Somebody mentioned, "Give them direction." But I am an educator, I've been an educator for over 25 years, and most of the students I teach are products, are products of a comprehensive high school who have not been successful. So, precisely the type of students that I think this charter school is targeting. I would like to know, I would have liked, I kind of share some of the concerns that Ms. Malakoff was raising, I would like to have heard some very specific explanations of what are you going to do to involve them? What are you going to do to engage the students? What are you going to do to give them direction? Every school on the planet wants to involve their students and engage their students and give their students direction. There's not one school I know of who says, "We hope we don't have engaged students, so if we're failing at it, what are you going to do that's going to be better?" I would have liked to have heard that, I truly would have liked to have heard that, I would have used it in my classrooms. I didn't hear it, and I don't see it in the proposal. I am really concerned, many of the things that other people have said, there are some really great ideas here, but they're not fleshed out, it's very ambitious, there are too many holes in it for me to feel comfortable that it really has satisfied all these criteria, that we are supposed to consider when we're, when we're considering a charter. And the one issue that we're not supposed to consider is the budget, and I feel like our decision is being driven by a budget, or at least our timeline is being driven by this issue of the grant. And I feel, I think, you know, doubly frustrated by that, given that this proposal could have come to us so much earlier, and we would not have been in this time crunch. There was certainly plenty of time within those 10 months between the time that the proposal was, the grant was submitted, and the time that we actually heard about this, that would have given us all the time we needed to raise these concerns that we are raising now without compromising the timeline for the, for the grant. And so, it's especially frustrating that we're now up against this timeline. And I just feel like I cannot in good conscience make a decision to approve this now. I would, I would like to see it come back, I would like to see the, some of these concerns addressed, but I, I don't feel I can approve it without having those issues addressed.
Thanks, Ms. Cordero. Dr. Noell, you indicated you had some concluding comments.
Yeah, I wanted a further comment. Part of the, I mean, I understand the timeline issue, and I, and I understand, I think there's an underlying feeling that, that I shouldn't have held that information secret, that I had applied for the grant, and I explained that before, that the grant was about an 80% chance of not receiving it, and, and the proposals had already been floated, and I felt that the, announcing it and then getting turned down on the grant would then reflect on the, on the content and quality of the proposals, and it was a decision I made to wait and to see if there was a grant, a grant came through. And you were notified very shortly after that. And then I made a formal decision, a formal presentation, informal presentation on the ideas on January 9th. That all aside, the fact is that, that the statute allows 60 days. Now, there's an argument between when the clock started running, between Dr. Sarvis and I, and, and between Dr. Sarvis's attorney and our attorney. But let's just take the May 12th deadline that Dr. Sarvis is using. That would mean that you, you had the grant, you had the proposal on, on February 9th, you had the formal submission on February 27th, which the clock slides on because of a question of whether duly authorized signatures were present, so you have till the 12th. Would it be enough time? See, I like some of, some of the suggestions that you're, that you're both making, that would it be time to send this to, first of all, to the lawyers for the charter school and the lawyer for the district, and get the legal stuff clear? What is and what is not something that is on the table for discussion? And, and then, having winnowed it out to that extent, come back to the board. But this would be within the May 12th deadline. Now, that runs, the money that, the issue, and I understand about being driven by money, Mrs. Cordero, you know, you get $400,000, $5,000 grant, and you may have to give back $360,000 because of a deadline. Everybody acknowledges that deadline is unrealistic. The people in the state board of edu, in the state Department of Education think it's unrealistic, and they're trying to persuade the federal government who provides the money to extend it. And as of yesterday, no word yet. In my call I made yesterday, I wanted to bring good news, but hope. So, there may be the ingredients here of, you know, there are several possibilities. One would be to say, all right, do a conditional approval, which is really like saying, we're agreeing to, we're agreeing to reach yes. Contingent upon corrections, as the attorney here suggests, he doesn't think there are legal problems, but, but there's lots of room based on the back end of, of Mr. Zettel's report to correct. And, and, so one possibility would be to have a contingent approval based upon the corrections that are, that are grounded in both Mr. Zettel's document and in these, these are specific reactions here from, from Mr. Mosher to, to this document. Now, if, so I can picture Paul Minnie and Greg Mosher getting together and, and working very constructively to clarify some of these issues. I was, maybe I, I don't, I don't want to just throw a motion out, I'd like to kind of hear what my colleague's reaction is to that kind of a concept.
Mrs. Harder, may I?
Yeah, go, Mrs. Parker.
I think it is very unfortunate that this grant is driving so much, because normally, if a chartering group realized that a board was having severe issues and feeling that elements weren't being met, they wouldn't, you wouldn't be talking about continuing this as part of the initial petition process, they would simply withdraw their petition, they'd work on it, maybe they'd work with the district, it would be a back-and-forth process. Again, this is all driven by the money. Again, this is all driven by the money deadline.
Well, yeah, in part, in part.
Um, I mean, I don't think that, and I hope that the group isn't sitting there crushed thinking, "Oh, no, we can't do this," because obviously you can go on through the appeal process, or you can simply rework this and bring it back to this board. It's this petition in this form with its inadequacies that I personally have concern with. It is not, I mean, I am very much in favor of career technical courses, and I've already worked through two previous charters just in the short five months that I've been on the board, and so I can see what a good charter looks like. It's very doable, but I, I, I just think we need to, like Mrs. Cordero, I completely agree, it needs to back off from it being all about the money.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious whether what you're saying, you're gonna answer these questions, or is it just, I mean, the last few pages on here are pretty general. I mean, I, they're not that specific. I'm, I guess I'm really more interested in how exactly the academics will work, and I guess I just want to know that before I would approve a program. And is that something, and yes, I, if we can do this all in a few weeks, and you could come back to us with a, with answers to questions, it's not you, it's this group. If they can come back to, with answers to questions, then I would love to see this happen. I mean, we, we talked, we've been talking about this a lot, and...
Shoot, we, we, under the Brown Act, I get to talk to one person, and it's been Laura.
And I've been asking questions. And I said, I really, I like the idea. I'm, I still am not convinced that we can't do this with an academy. We have, we've been, we have experience with that, and it's a known quantity. But because this is something so new, there's so many questions, and I just want to feel a little bit more secure about it before I'd say yes. If, if what you're proposing is to come back to us, and then I think we should have a continuance of some sort and just do this, so, you know, I'm willing to come back and talk about it again.
Yeah, Ms. Cordero.
Well, I think, I didn't realize that Ms. Malakoff was going to make her final comment, which is kind of what I was gonna say, too, that I'm, but my concern, well, I think, Dr. Noell, you relate to this. I've been a teacher long enough to know that you don't give a grade before you see the product. I would not feel comfortable saying, "Yes, we'll approve it in, in concept and work out all the details," because the details that we're asked, the issues that we've been raising, the details that we want to know about, I think, are some of the fundamental concepts in this proposal. And if they're not worked out in a way that I feel is really meets the, the criteria, I can't support it. So I feel like I have to see what the, what those answers are gonna be before I say I would support it. And it can't just be a, I mean, I, I wouldn't be satisfied, maybe other people would. I would not be satisfied with just an attorney's decision on whether or not the, the issues that we have raised are legally required. I would hope that this group would, would want to tell us what their curriculum is gonna be, what their pedagogy is gonna be, what their methodology is gonna be. I, I can't, I can't imagine, I mean, I was, I was part of the group that, that helped start this, as our Chavez Charter School. I mean, I can't imagine starting a school without a sense of what your curriculum is. And especially if you're gonna have it in place by September. I, I've, I've been on curriculum, I mean, at, at our community college, our curriculum process is practically a year long, just to change one class. So my, my answer to your, to the question I thought, thought you were raising is that I would not be willing to approve it in concept without seeing those details first.
Here's how I would characterize the situation, Dr. Noell. That if we wanted to wait until the April 24th meeting, I would say I feel like the ball would be in the petitioner's court to respond to issues raised tonight, to reformulate things in some, some way. I think you've heard some, some very positive feedback. I think you've heard some very critical feedback as well. I guess I would like to throw the ball back to the petitioners and say, "Do we want to meet again? Do we want to bring this back to the agenda on April 24th?" I feel like if we put it to an up or down vote tonight, I know I would vote it down. If we put it to a conditional vote, well, two of us would vote it down. If we waited two weeks to see what the responses were, or if there was a reformulation in plan, we might be able to move forward.
Would, would that include, in your, your concept, would that include that Mosher and, and Minnie look it over and sort through those differences, so that the board's informed about the legal things?
Yeah. Mr. Price, yes?
Well, I don't know if it'd be Mr. Minnie or who it would be. That would be up to the superintendent. But in terms of those legal things, I would point out that even though I just received Mr. Mosher's opinion when I got here tonight, it appears to me that there are very, very few details to be worked out.
Very, very few?
Very few.
Yeah.
I don't imagine that that ought to take any time whatsoever, and ought not to be a source of wasting what could be much more valuable time spent on addressing the educational issues. And I really just have one more comment on that, if you don't mind. Mr. Mosher's opinion does not say that there's no legal basis for turning down the charter. It says that there's every legal basis for approving the charter. Both those things are true. I want to analogize to a land use planning decision. Staff typically, whether it's before the city or before the county, prepares a report that gives the decision-making body the ability to, in most cases, approve or deny a project, because there are facts which, under law, will support a decision to do either. The question becomes one for the legislative body, in this case, the school board, to decide whether, if the house is too close to the creek or not too close to the creek, which finding it wants to go with. These are not legal issues, except for a few very minor things for the lawyers to talk about. Instead, they're issues for your elected board to grapple with and, and try and resolve if that's the direction that you're heading in with the petitioners.
Well, I guess, I guess what I would suggest, or I don't know whether there needs to be a motion to...
Okay. No, go ahead. I want to make sure your mic was on it.
Oh, okay. It would be that, that, I like, I like your idea, and that, that we get the, we get Minnie and Mosher together and deal with these, what Mr. Price says don't look like very substantial issues. Did I get that right?
I, I'm just not sure, Dr. Noell...
Are you raising your microphone to speak or to club?
Or to lean on, if I go to sleep. Never mind, please proceed.
Because I, because I believe that, that, that the petitioning group are, read this, and they say, "Well, this, we're in pretty good shape." And, and Mr. Zettel and, and the legal opinion that went into it say there are these grounds for denial, and, and there's, there is a funny logic there. I think Mr. Zettel alluded to it at the very beginning. There's no basis to talk about all the good things, and that, I had little Nudan here make a comment on that. You know, it's, it's a shame the discussion has to be so focused on, on negatives. But to sort through, so we all know where we stand on the legal issues. And my guess is, because I, I assume that those two attorneys have dealt with each other in the past, it's a small world out there in charter school law, I think.
But I also, you're, I also think that the board wants to hear about some of the, some answers to the substantive questions they've raised tonight, because...
Yeah.
While I think that, that the petitioners have tried to put together a very persuasive presentation, we don't need another persuasive presentation. We need answers to substantive questions. We don't need politicking or public relations. We need to get down to the nitty-gritty here in order to move forward. I'm seeing head nods, so, okay.
And, and Mrs. Harder, if I could chime in here?
Yeah, Ms. Parker.
My one concern with this talk about April 24th is that this is a months and months-long process.
Yes.
And now we're talking about trying to compress it into two weeks. And I don't know that we're gonna be able to get anywhere near what we've discussed that we need in two weeks.
I, I'm, I actually just threw the date out. I know, it was perhaps my error in, you know, trying to work things out with the agendas that we're facing.
But even with the petition staying the way it is, as part of this particular initial petition process, we apparently have to vote by, was it May 12?
Yes.
That's, you know, less than a month away, or just more than a month away. And I'm not sure that I would be comfortable with this petition being part of this, a new petition, a very substantially new petition, petition being part of the same petition process. So that's, I'm just throwing that out there because I, I don't want us to be unrealistic about that.
No, I agree. And my other concern is that we have been punting a lot of critical items, time-sensitive items, in order to allow for a very full discussion and hear from the community. And I feel like in some ways, the board has had the least amount of time to, to engage in discussion, because we've been trying to be respectful of hearing feedback from the public. May 1 is a Tuesday? Am I crazy? I don't have a calendar in front of me. Then May 8, and then May 15. So clearly that exceeds...
I have a small problem. I'll be in, in the Lower Valley drinking wine on May 8th.
Well, then May 15 it is. Actually, maybe we should all go with you, and that would be a better way to work things out, right?
Can we, can we, yeah, let's all go. My wife's...
Okay.
Is it the 8th or the 9th?
Well, I, I think my question is more, is the, I'm, I'm happy to postpone tonight without setting the next date, essentially, for the petitioning group to think about, do they want a vote taken on this, or do they want to withdraw it and work on it?
Well, but there's, there's a, these interact. Some of the, of the concerns that you were raising about this thing, it sounded like rewriting the charter, and the group may not want to rewrite the charter, and it may be that, it may be that your concern about it is not a grounds for denial. And, and, and I think that this group would like to hear from, from counsel, whether, before they jump in and try to rewrite this to, to, to satisfy that concern, whether, whether that is a legal grounds for denial. And, and the bottom line being, see, at some point, they, they may want to say, "We've adjusted it here, we do this, we're happy to collab," I know, I know they're happy to collaborate.
Right.
But at, but at some point, here's what it is.
Right.
It may not be what you like, but here's what it is.
Right. Well, Dr. Noell, that's always going to be a matter of judgment for whatever board this is before. We don't need, I don't think, any more legal opinion, really. What do you think, Mr. Price?
I think, that was Ms.... Raise is a good point, Dr. Noell, in that, in the judgment of this board, if they think it's an unsound plan, or if they think it's unlikely to be successfully implemented, they're always free to turn it down. And I, I don't say that as a threat, it's simply, simply that then it would set in motion the, the appeal process. And legal opinions aside, that wouldn't change, wouldn't necessarily change how a board member might vote on the petition. Go, go ahead, Ms. Cordero.
I agree with Ms. Parker, though, that, I mean, when we bring in our attorneys to consult, that's a use of, of district resources. I don't think we need any more consultation. I, I agree with, with Mr. Price that the, the facts are really not so much in question. It's really more which ones we want to look at. One attorney can say, "Here are the facts for why you should approve it." One attorney can say, "Here are the facts for why you should, why you can deny it." We have both of those already, and we just need to make some decisions. But part of our decisions are gonna be based on what, what the details are. So I'm really not in favor of spending more district resources on more legal opinions. I'd rather get the information.
Even if the information is irrelevant under the terms of denial of the law?
Well, can I give you one more, since I'm here already?
Mr. Price, yeah.
And you want to spend any more resources? And this, this is not an opinion, but just to clarify something, there, in terms of the additional information that I'm hearing some board members being desirous of gathering that, or providing that information, if the charter proponents are willing to do so, does not by any means require that the charter petition necessarily be amended. For example, if there's a question about whether the school is going to provide the full range of curriculum, either through its own staff or through Cyber High, that's a question that can be answered and can be brought back to the board, I would think. And similarly, with respect to many, many of the other questions. So I, I don't believe that moving toward a fuller understanding and answering some of the board members' questions would require rewriting the petition, starting over, or changing the existing timeframes that are currently in place. It would require some process. Hopefully, were the charter group wanting to cooperate with that, working with staff, and having a forum for questions being posed, and allowing staff and perhaps a board representative to engage, and then bring back the information to your board whenever you decided to take it up next time.
Yes, and, and my main concern was really, can we get the kind of information that we need by May 12th? So...
I really don't understand.
I'm sorry, Professor Black, we can't, unfortunately, we can't do this.
But you're asking the board, you're asking our board...
Mr. Black, I'm, Professor Black, I really don't think that we can, can engage in this kind of back and forth right now. Shall we...
Do we need a motion to, to continue, or do we just not vote?
No, we can, we have to continue.
I don't think, you don't need to make a motion to continue. Essentially, if we take no action tonight, it, it puts the ball back in the petitioner's court. Is that correct, Mr. Price?
Yes, the board may wish to consider if you take no action tonight, or if you decide that you're gonna continue it, to give direction with respect to whether all public comment has already been taken, so that you have the option of focusing on the board issues without, you know, needing to get to almost midnight before taking it up again.
I, I actually think that's a highly desirable suggestion.
And does, does it make a difference, then, whether we don't take action or whether we continue? I mean, I assume we need to vote to continue it in order to identify that public comment has already been taken, but is, maybe that's not correct.
I, to go in that direction, I would recommend that you vote to continue the matter and indicate that the continuance is for the purpose of bringing, continuing with the board discussion.
Okay. My move that we continue this discussion to a later date, does that...
And that all?
Will that be an opportunity for...
And that public input has been taken?
I'm sorry.
And no more input will be taken, no more public input will be taken. It'll be for a board discussion, as well as a presentation. Can we ask that the presentation be given to us in written form before the meeting, before our, our materials come out to us, so that we can have that, have read it, and be able to discuss it at the next, at whichever meeting that's, well, whichever meeting that works, since you, you put together the agenda?
If you write any questions, you don't have a question.
The questions were all posed during board discussion, and you would be, you would be, I know that you had several note takers here, but you would also be provided with a videotape of the meeting, so that you could go through and, and see what all of the questions were.
Oh, I was thinking... Okay, I would second that. Okay, I would second that. I'll second that motion.
I, I was thinking of the, actually, the discussed, the questions that brought up here, but as well, my interest was in the questions that are in, I counted 41 questions in here.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded.
What's the motion?
Go ahead and restate the motion, Ms. Malakoff.
That we continue this meeting, that the petitioners respond to our questions during this meeting and in this review petition, the petition review, and respond to us and get that information back to us, so it can be in our packet, so that we can read it before whichever meeting they prefer to, or whichever it's, I, I don't know how to make which meeting it is, but it's before May 12. And that we have board discussion at that point.
And I seconded that.
Yes. And that, that included that all public comment had already been taken.
Correct.
Yes.
All public comment has already been taken.
All public comment has already been taken?
Yes.
Is there going to be any forum for, for, for the petition, petition group to talk to?
Yes, I think that was included.
That was included.
I think that was included.
That was included in the motion.
Yes.
There'll be non-public responses to the board then?
Okay, so, so we have.
We have the motion.
Can I hear that motion again? Before I vote?
I can try. I can try. Okay.
Somebody writing this motion down?
Yes.
Before you do, may I ask for clarification? You're asking to continue the board discussion of the petition?
Yes.
Okay.
But you're also asking us to answer your questions.
Well.
So can we just have our motion?
What I want to, what I want to discuss is your, is something, we want to have something to discuss. And so I want a response to discuss.
Doc, you know what, Ms. Malakoff, Dr. Malakoff, can I request that the board not engage in conversation with the audience, please?
Thank you. I move that we continue this discussion, that the petition.
That we continue the board discussion.
The board discussion, that the petitioners respond to our questions that we, we've had in this board meeting, as well as in this written review. They provide us with a response to that, that we not have.
In writing prior to the meeting.
Yes, prior to the meeting, in writing, prior to the meeting, so that we can get it in our packet, at an arranged meeting, which is in agreement between the board president,
and staff and the petitioners.
The president and the petitioners, and that no more public input be taken, since we've had, I think, about four or five hours of.
And I have seconded that three times now.
I have to remind you that, that if it's on the board's agenda, the, the board's required to take public input.
Not.
Okay, so, we have the motion. Can we call the question?
Is that correct?
I, I.
Yes, I'm looking at Mr. Price for quick clarification.
When there's an agenda item that continues over for a public hearing, asks is common with public agencies, where there's been a full and complete opportunity to take comment, and all the requesting speakers have had that opportunity. The board has the opportunity when time runs out to continue the matter, and to continue it for the purpose of having the board discussion without reopening all over again, public comment. In terms, but let me finish, please. In terms of the additional information that may come into the board, I'll have to evaluate between now and then whether there would be any requirement for public comment on that.
Thanks, Mr. Price.
So this is continuing a matter?
Yes.
Which, which allows the cessation of further public comment, huh?
Yes. And we've called for the question.
We've had a call for the question.
We're the public, and we can't talk.
We've had, we've called for the question.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. So it will be continued. There will be presumably a response from the petitioners. There will be further board discussion, and it, that discussion does not eliminate the opportunity for some question and answer between the board and the petitioning group. But it would not be three minutes of public comment from all of the supporters who come to attend the meeting. Okay.
May I, Madam President, just enter a couple of observations?
Certainly.
One thing, I, I do not believe all of those people were rounded up and herded here. I think that many of the people who made public comments, they were strangers to me, that's for sure. And they came, I believe, you know, on, on their own. I've known Walter Cohen for 30 years, but I haven't seen him in 10. The other, the other thing I think is important to, it, it is within, if I understand it correctly, Mr. Price can correct me, but it is within petitioner's right to have a vote within 60 days. And, and it can only be extended by agreement with petitioner. And that, and I, I recognize that there's a dispute over when the clock began, but if I understand, no one's claiming later than, than May 12. Is that correct, Mr. Zarvis?
That no one is claiming what?
That, that the, that the ending time is May 12.
That's correct.
That's what I advised, advised.
Yeah.
By our.
I thought, I thought I heard you saying that.
Moving.
You know, and, 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 you know, on personal grounds, I would hope that it would be before May 8, because I will not be unable to be here.
Thank you. Item E2, at the conclusion of a very long, very complete discussion for this evening. Item E2, approval of the district's collective bargaining tentative agreement with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. And Dr. Robertson, I believe you are here to guide us through this discussion.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Do you want?
And aren't you glad you're the presenter for this item?
Do you want board action to continue items?
I'm sorry, we, we need to take board action to continue items. I'm sorry. Will someone make a motion?
I move that we continue past 10:30.
Yeah. Is there?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Malakoff, seconded by Ms. Cordero. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
One no.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Noel.
Let me also say that we need to go back to report out on expulsions.
Yes, I knew that. I knew that.
Good. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Dr. Robertson.
The district's collective bargaining tentative agreement with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association was submitted for public disclosure and first reading at the March 13th board meeting. The tentative agreement was ratified by the Santa Barbara Teachers Association Bargaining Unit members on March 22. Tonight is the second reading, and I'd like to just briefly review the proposal with you and the language that's coming forward on the ratification. In base, in your packet and your handouts, basically, what we're talking about is a 10% salary increase over three years, a new robotics coach stipend, an assistant coach stipend, class size increase with caps at 30 for grades 4, 6, 33, grades 7, 8, 35, grades 9, 12, and 31 for San Marcos High School. It includes the secondary calendar also, which was to approve a change of the ending date, so that we weren't going into the third week of June and could move back into the second week of June. It involved moving a few days in spring vacation, so that we could move up graduation time. The health benefits will be reopened every single year as a part of negotiations. That's part of it, and we're wanting to look at developing a truly catastrophic, no-cost program in health welfare benefits. The second one, an article on hours and conditions, it has to do with collaboration for instructional program planning. And the union, the association, and the district has basically agreed that we will work together collaboratively on all phases of instructional program planning, to discuss the issues or concerns that might arise from that, and try to move forward together as a unit in being involved in these programs, and having the opportunity to have input. So the language there is just addressing how that will be approached. The next one was the response to interventions, which is basically the opportunity for interventions and strategies and techniques to be tried first before actually moving students to the student study team, thereby then getting the process started for perhaps special education placement. And this is a pilot, more or less, in June, we're going to be doing an evaluation of how the RTI is going. But we have developed some language for how general ed classroom teachers will be involved with this, how special ed teachers will be involved, the kinds of roles that the bargaining unit members will play in this, and then the opportunity to be able to discuss how it's working in our schools, and move it forward if, if it's working well. The last one is the Article 7, Section 4, which has to do with reassignment of teachers. We basically reworked some of the language in regards to what, how teachers could be reassigned on campus, based on whatever needs there are with the grade levels, or some changes or a loss of staff that they have to address. And we created a new section, under 4.2, which talks about the posting of the positions that are available for staff to apply for transfer vacancies, how they get posted, and making, legitimizing our process on that. We really didn't have a very specific language in the contract that discussed the issue of how we post vacancies, and who has rights to them, and the transfer rights, et cetera. So we ended up spelling that out and creating a whole new section. And so at this point, my recommendation is to the board, after long months of working together with SBTA, that we've met the requirement for the pub, public disclosure of the collective bargaining agreement, and I'm requesting that this three-year tentative agreement be approved and ratified by the board tonight.
Thanks, Dr. Robertson. I think probably all of the board members are extremely familiar with the provisions of the new contract. I applaud you and staff, and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association for being so tenacious in this process. I think that ultimately, it's a winning situation for the students of Santa Barbara, that we came to this really historic agreement, a three-year agreement, when we've been doing it year by year. And I think it's a, an enormous positive step forward. So thank you to you, thank you to SBTA. And any board questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
By Ms. Cordero, seconded by Ms. Malakoff. Is there any further board discussion? All those in favor of approving the district's collective bargaining agreement with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There you go. It passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we move on to our expulsions. And I just had one quick question, and that is, now that we are engaged in this new expulsion process, do we need to change the, the wording on the cover sheet? The review of the expulsion case must be completed in closed session unless the parent or student requests an open session. I suppose that still adheres, if they've requested a supplemental hearing. But I don't know if you want to say anything in that cover sheet language about a supplemental hearing.
Well, earlier this evening, we did send you the draft of letter 2.
Right.
And whatever revisions made, we will, we will implement.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Gonzalez. In case 0607-53, is there?
Move, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you?
No, no, no.
Oh. Move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
I should be keeping track. Okay, let me see. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes 5-0. In case 0607-40.
Move to approve the finding and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was that Ms. Park, Parker?
It was Ms. Parker. It was Ms. Cordero, Ms. Parker. Everybody vote there? Okay. In case 0607-42.
Move to approve the finding and, and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are done with our expulsions, and we are on to item F2, report on the second, on the draft second interim budget report.
Let me thank you, first of all, for continuing the meeting, so that we can get this in. This is important. This sets the stage for our, our meeting next week, where we have a workshop, well, it's not a workshop, but it's a special meeting on budget cuts, which will be followed up by the following meeting, where we expect to have final action on budget cuts. So this is critical to us. Mr. Diaz, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, I want to thank Bob, and Shirley, and Patty. Come on up here, Shirley. Don't sit at the back by yourself. Come on up here. We're extremely long hours and a lot of work on this, but we feel pretty good about these numbers that we're going to present you tonight.
I think that's appropriate for this time of night.
Yeah.
I like it.
Anyway, Bob, Bob's going to, we, we don't have a long presentation. We show you the numbers, we'll provide you a baseline for your budget cutting that begins next week.
Actually, it's an optical illusion. It's actually clear.
It's clear. Our eyes are just seeing it like this.
That's wild.
It's holding our attention.
We're going to talk, you were provided with the, a list of the budget assumptions that we use to produce the multi-year projections. This is just a summary of, of those items to give you an idea. Where you see 6% here, this represents the fact that the budget in the 0607 year does not reflect the teacher's agreement that you just agreed to. Okay? So that, this is 6%. This is 3% for this year, and 3% for the next year. So that's what that 6% represents. The same thing happens with the teacher, with the classified, when I get there. 32 reduction of FTE, that's due to declining enrollment and the increased class sizes. Again, 3% is the 1 and 1/2% this year, 1 and 1/2% again, average step increases, management, pretty much the same. This is the 1% in the health that's already there. We increased the benefits a little bit, because there's been speculation on the part of STIRS for the teachers, that it's going to go up a half a percent for us. And there are probably going to be some changes in workers' comp and other things, so we stuck those in there when we did this. We eliminated all of the local donation expenditures, all of the 9,000 accounts that are paying for teachers, and books, and all that other stuff, because there is no contract with the board, but from the PTA or the PTO organizations, that they're going to continue that funding. And so until, unless we, they come in with a contract, we're, we're not going to count those in this budget. This is what this looks like. This is write-off, this is a really condensed version of what you see in the multi-year projections for this year. It appears that we're going to meet our state minimum reserve and have some money left over. We're reserving, these are the standard reservations that we have for revolving cash in stores. This is the teacher's agreement for this year, so it moves up a year. That's what this is. That's why it's in this year, but it says next year. There's nothing for the CSCEA, there's nothing for the confidential management, so those are to be determined. We've added a technology repair replacement. We found the need for that, as, as you get more technologically involved, everybody goes out and buys new computers, nobody puts away money to basically repair them or replace the servers that we're having go down now. This is the Gatsby 45 that we've talked about, and the contractual one, health increase for the benefits of 1%. These figures that are up here, and these balances, you look and see $9 million, and say, that's great. Well, that's great, but there's $7 million in people that have been cut from the expenditure budget to get to that $9 million. If any of these temporaries come back, if any of these 32 FTE aren't laid off, that number's going to go way down, and that's going to affect this year out here. So you need to be, be acutely aware of that. And another 6 FTE here for this year is also the layoffs for the, again, declining enrollment, and the, and obviously, the increased class size for the certificated. So that's what it looks like on the second interim. We shouldn't have any trouble with the county on that. As long as we can make sure that we take this action on the, at least 32, that will be good. Again, the temporaries are, you already acted on, on March 13. These are the, these are the salaries of the people that you, that you cut and went away. The only thing that will be added in here are the LOAs, the leave of absences that we currently have, that are coming back into the district someplace, or the leave of absences that are going out. And so I, that, I assume that that was net to zero, is that's the way that would work out, which is why we didn't calculate that in there. So that you understand, because one of the discussions that we had when Stark was here, that we were going to have a 5% ending fund balance, because that's good for, for business and do that. The next slides are going to look at scenarios that are exactly the same information. The only thing that's changed is this reserve here. So here's the first scenario. This is what the 5% ending fund balance across all five years. You're not going to make it, okay? And you're not going to make it in the out year. So we're not going to be able to go to 5% immediately. The second scenario, scenario B, is a gradual increase of 1% a year, where we start with 3%. year, where we start with 3% this year, which we think we're going to do. We're going to go to 4% in the second year, which again, we think we're going to do, we're still going to have money left over, but in the third year out, getting to 5%, we're not going to be able to do that. So there's at least a cut there. The next scenario, let's see, oh, I'm sorry, this is the, this is the half percent, I forgot to change that, I'm sorry. This is half percent. So we went from 3 to 3.5 to 4, and this looks like it's a doable, doable issue, again, if we have all of these cuts in staffing, at the certificated level on, in both years. So in summary, budget reductions, we need to provide for the other employee groups, the CSCE is not included in there, I'm sure they're going to be looking for the deal that the teachers got for the next two years, which is essentially amounts to about 7%. The difficulty in the 0809 year is that we speculate that the COLA is going to be 2.7%. If it's 2%, you're giving away 4 to the teachers, and so that's going to make a major cut. Looking at that, and taking that into consideration, we need to cut between 3 and $4 million off the budget for next year, to have that, to have that cushion and safety, because it, that's going to be a major change in the way this district has done business in the past. It's going to, it's going to involve some programs that people don't want to see go, but that's just the way it has to be. I mean, we're getting to the point where we're trying to bring this district and stabilize the financial situation of the district, so that we can provide services to the students of the district, and make sure that the employees are kept for. So if you're looking for a goal to cut between 3 and 4 million, I would side, of course, if you're asking me, I would say 4.5 or 4, but you can probably get away maybe between 3.2 and 3.3.
Does that include the 32 people that you?
The 32 people are already gone. That's, 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 that's in excess, too. Yeah, in addition to, you need another 3 million. And then I thought I'd give you a nice scene to end it.
Now it's snowing.
That's right. Actually, that's my backyard.
Mr. Wolf, will you provide us with hard copies of what you just put up there?
Yes, ma'am, I have those for you over on the counter.
Okay, and then I have just two more questions.
Is that for both districts combined?
Yes, sir.
That was the first question, the, the ending balance and the reserve is both districts combined.
That's correct.
And the cuts are, too, the budget cuts?
Yes, sir.
So could it come all out of one district, or all?
Well, yeah, it could come out of all of one district if you want to. I think that, I think that when we get done with this year, the way it's looking right now, that we're possibly going to make actually the 3% in the elementary school district for the first time. Maybe.
Actually, that was my.
I'm keeping my fingers crossed.
My next question was, that, even though it's a combined reserve, we are still allocating funding from the two separate accounts, so that secondary money, for instance, is not paying for elementary salary increases.
Well, I wouldn't go that far. There's a, there's a, there's a, you have to understand that there's a difference between the money from the, from the paper side of the house, and the accounting side of the house, it gives you a fund balance, and actually cash in the bank. Okay? On the cash in the bank side, on the elementary school district, because of the charter schools, the elementary school district, and because of their close status to being at the basic aid, and being on that bubble, and that, and that sort of hump, they lose $1.8 million. They give away $4 million in, in property tax money to the charter schools, and the state only gives back $3 million. Okay, so that's a cash flow problem at the elementary school district. If we try to pay the retro to the teachers, and to the classified workers this year, and we don't wait till July 1st, you're probably going to be borrowing money on a temporary basis. At. With either, within the elementary school district, and within the secondary district, into the general fund, out of the construction funds, or whatever is available, until such time as, as we start to come back in. If you wait, you probably won't have to borrow between the districts on a temporary basis. But when I say temporary basis, I'm talking about less than 120 days.
Thank you, actually. That was, that was the gist of what I was trying to get at. And obviously, there would be a full public disclosure.
That's correct.
We were doing, taking that action. Okay. Other board questions? Boy, do things at 11:45, and we can really move along. No questions right now? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate you and the rest of the staff staying so late to do this presentation, but it was critical that we, that we get it done. Okay, that was a discussion item only, there's no action to be taken there. And I suspect we are going to delay the rest of our agenda for another time.
We can do that.
I think there's a critical discussion to be had with reports in board discussion on community meetings to combat gang activity, but what's the point in doing it now? There's simply no audience for it. Okay. So we are delaying three items, that item, new categorical programs, and the academic performance index. Coming events, I think Dr. Sarvis hit the high points. Board correspondence, board comments, if anybody goes for their microphone right now. Future agenda items, okay, then.
Well, we do have a, a board meeting next week.
Yes.
And we'll expect to start at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock next week, primarily focused on budget issues.
Budget reductions. I also have scheduled for next week, a, a short presentation by Dale Scott on the refunding of the general obligation bonds.
Excellent.
But that will be short.
Okay.
And he's making special arrangements to come down, so.
Excellent.
Let me ask though, one of the items that we had postponed was safe school plans, we'll plan to put that on the agenda as well. These three items, do you want to take up these three items next week as well?
I would certainly like to try.
Okay.
Well, let's try to get the GEO bond guys on first, or if you can, at the earliest part of the meeting.
We can arrange that.
Because they're coming down from San Francisco, then we can get them out of here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.